Good to see you all here this evening. We love when we have a lot of people turn out to hear what your town council has to say and for you to share your thoughts with us. We really appreciate you being here. We're going to start our meeting as we customarily do with our roll call of council members.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ivan Huffman.
Hi, I'm Tom Lawson.
Happy Thursday evening. My name's Melissa Hunt.
I'm Mike Horn.
I'm Ken Sadler.
Evening, Jane Welch.
Good Thursday evening. I'm Monty Long.
And we have with us, if I can see all of them around the room, we have our town manager, our town attorney, our town public works director, our sergeant of our community policing, our town planner. Veronica, you want to pop your head out? Our town communications specialist, our town clerk, and our town finance director. Do I miss anybody? Very good. Thank you all for being here. We'll start this meeting with an invocation from council member Jane Welch and the Pledge of Allegiance led by council member Dr. Sadler. If you'll please stand if you're able and join us.
Dear Heavenly Father, first and foremost, we thank you. Thank you for our many blessings, even for our hardships as we learn from them, and we praise you. Tonight, as we are about to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please give us the wisdom and the fortitude to pay attention to each word. As we say our pledge, pledge, that is a promise, and pledge allegiance. Allegiance is our loyalty to the flag which represents the United States of America and to the Republic. The Republic, that's our people, and for which the flag stands, it doesn't lay down, it stands, and it stands for one nation, one nation under God, our Supreme Leader. And it's indivisible. We don't want to be divided, and it stands with liberty. That's our freedom, our freedom and justice. Not justice for a few, but a justice for all. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. Councilmember Welch, I know you have worked on that for quite a bit. I would love a copy of it.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe if it's not handwritten, I can read it.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Jane, a lot. Councilmembers, we do have one addition to the agenda this evening, and it will be, we will add, under new business, seven I, and this will be a contribution to the Winston-Salem Foundation for their Classroom Supplies Fund. Angie, are there any other additions that we need to make this evening?
No, there is not, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, what's your pleasure, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion.
Almost died for a second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is our agenda for this evening. Ms. Manager, our consent agenda, please.
Yes, Mayor. Tonight on the consent agenda is Resolution 2025046, the financial statements for three months ended September 30th of 2025. Approval of draft agenda briefing minutes, October 6, 2025, and lastly, approval of draft regular meeting minutes for October the 9th, 2025.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. We take them as a group for expediency. However, any council member can ask for any one event to be removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration. What's your pleasure, council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Excuse me. Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We have a timid group here this evening. We'll do better. Alrighty. Mr. Lewis, are you in the house? You need to stand up and come forward, please.
Thank you. This is one of the great... Hey, Veronica, can you turn me down just to hear? I think I'm a little loud. I know Cliff is hard to hearing, but it's probably too loud. Those of you at the fire department appreciate that. You're hearing aids in good. Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the great pleasures of being mayor is that I get to recognize individuals who have made contributions to the town of Lewisville. This particular award is called "I'm One of the Reasons Lewisville is a Great Place to Live." Don't try to figure out that acronym because it just doesn't work. But I've known Cliff easily 35 years. I think so. I go back to his first dog, and we've known each other all the years, but I've always found him to be an amazingly generous, kind, considerate, knowledgeable, giving-of-himself type person. Cliff, we want to recognize you tonight for a couple of reasons. Number one, you are advancing our ability to do public art in Lewisville. Your contributions for, if you haven't been there, Lewisaurus and Eleusaurus, who are the two dinosaurs that are in back of the community center, and Opel, the ostrich, which is in front of the community center. And there's also a piece waiting in Cliff's backyard to be placed in one of our roundabouts soon to be constructed. Additionally, Cliff has served our town as president or chairman?
President.
President. Chief lackey of the Lewisville Fire Department for 18 years.
No.
More?
No, that's not right.
That's not right, okay. It seems like a lot longer, right?
Yeah.
But you all know that we are so proud of our fire department. They are, in my opinion, one of the best in the state, and that's to a great extent thanks to the leadership of Cliff and, of course, all the firefighters here. Do we have some of the firefighters and fire department folks here? How about just stand up real quick? Let us recognize you. So Cliff, on behalf of the Lewisville Town Council, I want to present you with "I'm One of the Reasons Lewisville is a Great Place to Live" and for outstanding contributions to the town of Lewisville and our residents, Lewisville Town Council, this date, November 13th, 2025. And we're going to pause for a picture. You got to take the award. Take the award. I know you're a man of many words. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
First of all, I was going to say thank you, and I want you to know that I mean, I've lived in Lewisville, or in the Lewisville community rather, for almost 50 years, and Lewisville is very much a part of who I am. But when I was reading the citing of these different things and the artwork, I can assure you, I did none of it. Frank Holder, you know, was the one that did it, and he's the one that really deserves the recognition. Same thing with the fire department. I do not eat smoke. I don't go to Monday trainings. I don't ride a fire truck. I don't... I can't even keep the numbers of the fire trucks straight. But I was going to say, it's the guys who serve with the fire department that make it as good as it is. But it is, Lewisville since its inception and going back prior to its incorporation as a town has been blessed by incredible leadership and forward-thinking and always looking in terms of what's best for the community. And I know that it's changed a lot over the 50 years that I've been here, but it has, you know, change is hard and growth is hard, but I mean, it would be, a lot of people would be surprised that as much as the town square has been a center for and it's a defining part of Lewisville, how much opposition there was to it before it was built. And, you know, same thing with the wagon road. Of course, any of you guys who were stuck in the traffic this afternoon in construction, you would appreciate the fact that whose stupid idea was this? But the wagon road, I think, will be another feature that winds up being a defining part of Lewisville. And when they said they were going to have all of these roundabouts that they were have, I said, you know, we have to have something in the roundabouts other than lamp posts. And I think it will be a really a feature that, you know, hopefully makes Lewisville unique. We've got so many roundabouts. I told Mike I wanted the, you know, my efforts and stuff to be seed money with the idea that encourage other organizations and people to adopt a roundabout, to understand that to make Lewisville great, we all have to step forward. So Mike, thank you very much.
You're welcome, old friend.
I think in 28 years of presenting this award, that's probably been the longest acceptance speech we've ever had. Very good. PJ, you're up.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hope everybody's having a good week. Just to piggyback off of what the mayor said about the Lewisville Fire Department, they are probably the best in the state. Those men and women do a phenomenal job. I'm proud to be associated indirectly with the partnership. I've never had a, an incident where I've called to ask for their help, that they've not come out and willing to do so. So the citizens of Lewisville are very fortunate to have the type of apparatus and the personnel dedicated to the fire service. They are, they're truly heroes, and I'm proud of the partnership that we have with them, so. The stats for October, 825 calls for service, 432 of those being security checks, 41 traffic arrest violations, 24 alarms, and five, about a five-minute response time. So I don't have the stats from last year. We had a computer glitch before I went home, and I've been out of town teaching most of the day, so I don't have those stats. But I'll have those added to the stat sheet for next month, so I hope everybody has a good rest of their week and let us know if we can do anything to help you.
Thank you, PJ. Any questions for PJ? Alrighty. Stay safe, buddy. Pam, you and I believe have a guest to introduce, and you have a joint presentation you're going to make.
Hi, good evening. I am pleased to report that the audit of our annual comprehensive financial report for the town of Lewisville for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025 is complete. We did submit the audited financial statements to the Local Government Commission, or LGC, on October 28th. They were approved on November 6th. In an effort to improve transparency, the LGC requires that all audit results must be presented to the governing board by the audit firm in a live meeting of that governing board. This presentation must be made within 45 days of the date that the audit is submitted to the LGC. The auditor must notify the governing board of any internal control weaknesses or matters of noncompliance. The auditor is also required to report any performance indicators of concern. So to that end, tonight, we have Monty Pendry with CPA firm of Gibson and Company. Together, we have put together a presentation for the town council that will satisfy all of the reporting requirements for the LGC. Monty will begin by reporting on the results of the audit procedures and the audit report, and then I will pick up and talk about the numbers.
Good evening. As Pam said, I'm here to give you a very brief overview of the results of our audit for the year ended June 30th, 2025. In the annual comprehensive financial report, our auditor's opinion can be found on pages one through three. And in that opinion, in one of the paragraphs, it states that "the management of the town of Lewisville is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." And this includes the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal controls relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. It is our, the auditor's responsibility to express opinions on these financial statements based on the audit. The audit is conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. And these standards require that the audit is planned and performed to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. In addition, our opinion goes on and says that "an audit involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements." An audit also includes evaluating the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the reasonableness of significant estimates made by management, as well as evaluating the overall presentation of the financial statements. And the most important paragraph in our audit report is the opinion paragraph, and it states that "in the opinion of Gibson and Company, based on the audit, that the financial statements of the town of Lewisville present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the town of Lewisville and the changes in net position of the town for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025." And this is what we call an unmodified audit opinion, or a clean opinion, which is the best opinion we can issue. When performing the audit, we found that all the bank accounts and investment accounts were properly reconciled, all balance sheet accounts were properly reconciled, the accounting records were neat and in good order. We did not have to make any adjusting journal entries to the books. There were no internal control deficiencies and no matters of noncompliance. There were no budget violations, and there were no performance indicators of concern, so everything looked really, really good. And now I'm going to turn it over to Pam, and she's going to talk to you about some of the numbers.
All right. I'll pick up here and discuss some of the financial highlights. First of all, we're going to look at the general fund, which is the town's main operating fund. This slide outlines the revenues and expenses of the general fund. The first column shows the amounts budgeted as they are amended. The second column shows the actual amounts received and spent as far as revenues and expenses, and the third column shows the variance between budget and actual. The town's two largest revenue sources are property tax revenue and sales tax revenue. Property tax revenue came in this year at $3,875,000, which did exceed budget by $105,000. This is the fiscal year where our property tax rate did change. It went from 17.7 cents to 21.7 cents per $100 of valuation. This four-cent increase in the property tax rate did lead to a 25% increase in the amount of property tax revenue that we did collect. Sales tax revenue came in at $1,290,000, which was just over budget by just $729. Overall, sales tax revenue did increase 5% over prior year. Other revenues came in at $1,886,000, which was over budget by $111,000. This positive variance was due to one of our revenue sources that did perform particularly well. Investment earnings on our idle cash did come in over budget by $65,000. So total revenues for the year in the general fund were $7,051,084. Then, total expenditures for general government, public works, planning, parks and recreation, public safety, and debt service came in at a total of $6,176,040. And then, as Monty just pointed out, all departmental expenditures were made within budget. There were no budget violations. The next section shows transfers from and to other funds. The transfer from other funds of $374,752 came from the ARPA fund to the general fund to reimburse the general fund for salaries, taxes, and benefits. The transfer out of $263,827 was the loan to the Willow Run Municipal Service District to help them make the needed repairs to the Marblehead Dam. So bottom line, the general fund balance increased by $985,969. This added to the fund balance at the beginning of the year does give us a fund balance total at June 30th of $8,412,610. Now, there are several factors that had a positive effect on the general fund balance and led to its growth. First of all, we did make our final transfer of ARPA money into the general fund in the amount of $374,752. Remember, we have never budgeted the ARPA revenue in the operating budget. That way, we do not become dependent on it as a revenue source to help pay for our regular operating expenses, so that revenue is just icing on the cake. Fund balance also grew because, as mentioned previously, total revenues came in over budget by $216,779. Property tax revenue and investment earnings performed very well this year. On the expense side, our fund balance grew because some of our expenses did come in significantly under budget. The expense for garbage and recycling collection provided by Waste Management came in under budget by $159,000. The last unit count performed by Waste Management occurred in the spring of 2024. In the budget, we include the units in that count, which were 5,240 houses or homes. Plus, we included amounts for any homes that were approved for construction. Those totaled in addition... Those totaled an additional 600 homes. So during fiscal '24-'25, Waste Management did not revise their census, and so we did get the benefit that which helped keep us below our budget for that expense. Lastly, salaries and benefits did come in under budget by $167,000. There are several reasons for this. First of all, there were vacancies in the planning department throughout the year. In addition, the town paid out less in overtime than we had budgeted. Our nonexempt employees are given the option to be paid for or to bank their hours in excess of 40 hours each week. If they choose to bank their excess hours, they can use that time as additional paid off. And it seems that more and more of our employees are taking that as an option, so that keeps our overtime costs down. In addition, the renewal rates on our medical insurance came in lower than we had anticipated. Now, it's very difficult to just look at a single number such as general fund balance and see if our town finances are healthy. So instead, you really have to look at that number and how it relates to other numbers in our financials. So to that end, the LGC provides a calculation that they like to use to help measure the financial health of local governments. The calculation is a ratio. It is general fund balance available for appropriation as a percentage of general fund expenditures. For those of you that are interested in the math behind that calculation, the calculation is always made as of June 30th, so at the end of each fiscal year, you take your cash and investments and subtract any accounts payable and accrued expenses. This gives you your fund balance available for appropriation. You then divide this number by the general fund expenditures for the year, as well as any transfers out of the general fund during the year. So at June 30th, 2025, the town had a general fund balance available for appropriation of $7,807,793. The amount as a percentage of general fund expenditures and transfers out calculates to 121%. The LGC interprets this percentage as follows. A percentage of 8.33% would mean that an entity has enough cash on hand to cover one month of operating expenditures. So our percentage of 121% translates to enough cash on hand to cover 14 months of budgeted operating expenditures. Now, the town council in past years did approve a fund balance policy. It states that the town will not allow the available fund balance percentage to drop below 65%. An exception to this policy reads that available fund balance may be purposefully drawn down below the targeted percentage for emergencies, economic influences, nonrecurring expenditures, or major capital projects. So we are clearly in compliance with our own internal policy. Now, remember I said that it is a calculation that LGC uses to measure the financial health of local governments. I wanted to see how the Town of Lewisville compared to other municipalities our size. The LGC recommends that we compare ourselves to other municipalities with similar-sized budgets rather than population. So I went back and looked at the statistics for municipalities in North Carolina with budgets between $1 million and $10 million, and we do fall about in the middle of that range. There are 171 cities and towns that fall in this category. The average percentage for all of these was 101%, and the median percentage was 103%. So our percentage of 121% compares well to our counterparts across the state. Now, I wanted to touch on some of the reasons why it's important to have a healthy fund balance. There are several reasons. First of all, healthy reserves provide cash flow for contingencies and emergencies. These emergencies could be weather-related, like the hurricane that devastated so many of our mountain communities. The next reason to maintain healthy reserves is to avoid debt. Cash reserves may be used rather than debt to fund capital projects. Next, healthy reserves serve as a cash management tool. Expenses are normally paid out evenly throughout the year, but revenues come in much slower. Property tax revenue doesn't even really start to come in until about December of the fiscal year. So extra cash on hand gives us the cash to get through the times when expenses and revenues don't always match up. Next, healthy reserves also generate investment income. When interest rates are high, this is a significant revenue source for us. Healthy cash reserves also allow for participation in unexpected opportunities. Reserves can be used to take advantage of grants that require the town to front its own funds to cover expenditures before reimbursement can occur, and also to cover those grants that do require a town match. And lastly, strong reserves help the town maintain good standing in the community as being creditworthy and good stewards of the public's money. Now, I'd like to talk about the other funds in the town just briefly. We have right here the results of the activity in the Willow Run Municipal Service Tax District. The MSD had total revenues of $350,247, which included property tax revenue of $76,399. Revenues also include the loan from the general fund of $263,000 to fund the repairs to Marblehead Dam. Expenses totaled $46,301. These expenses do include the preliminary engineering work on the Marblehead Dam repairs. The construction repairs are taking place right now, and those expenses will fall in our current fiscal year that we're in right now. So fund balance increased by $303,946 to an ending fund balance of $553,727 as of June 30th. Now, I'd like to look at our capital reserve funds. This slide shows the activity in the town's three capital reserves. For each reserve, you see the beginning balance, any investment earnings, and any transfers into the fund or out of the fund, and then the balance of each reserve at June 30th. There were no budgeted transfers into these capital reserves during the fiscal year '24- '25. Each only grew by the amount of interest earned. So the grand total of all three reserves at June 30th was $150,967. It is worth noting that in our current fiscal year '25-'26, the budget does provide for funding of these reserves from the general fund. Funding these capital reserves is a great way to save for future capital projects. Next, we have the activity or the balances of our capital project funds. You see here the name of each project fund and then its fund balance at June 30th. All in all, these projects have a total fund balance of $4,839,620. And lastly, we have our ARPA fund. The Town of Lewisville did receive total funding from the federal government of $4,24,472. For the last four fiscal years, we have been transferring this amount in annual installments to the general fund to reimburse the general fund for salaries and benefits. We had until December 31st, 2024, to accomplish this, and we made the deadline with time to spare. The ARPA fund does still have investment earnings of $176,287 in it. The U.S. Treasury Department has told us that that money is considered to be unrestricted, and we can use it for any use that we would like, as long as we stay within state law So that does conclude my presentation. I have, at your place, each council has a copy of the annual comprehensive financial report. This same report can also be accessed online on our town's website, and I've put the website up on the screen. It's lewisvillenc.net/finance. I have also entered this report with the Government Finance Officers Association to be judged for another certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting as well. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Pam?
No, it sounds like we should consider keeping her. She looks really good.
For another year, yeah, that's right. Pam, I know I speak for the council, and I know I speak for the residents when I say there probably is nobody any better in municipal finance than you. Every time that we go around the state and we talk to other managers and we talk to other mayors, I tell them, if they want a lesson in municipal finance, please come to Lewisville, because you're going to probably talk with one of the best people around. So thank you for all you do. Monty, it's always good to see you again, too. Let's not make it an annual thing. Come back anytime. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to say she's probably one of the, probably the best finance directors in the state, so y'all now have the best fire department and the best finance. But us at Gibson Company would like to, once again, thank y'all for allowing us to serve as your auditors, and we look forward to many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Monty.
Thank you, Monty.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be four opportunities to speak to the council this evening. We're coming up on one of those right now, which is our first public forum. We also have a public hearing on the approval for the Unified Development Ordinance text changes, and we also have a public hearing on the proposed rezoning at 6732 Schallford Road. So if you are here to speak on either one of the public hearings, hold your comments until those come up. But if you're here to talk about anything else, please come forward, state your name and your address. Anybody here? I have several people who've signed up. A.C. Hengler, you're first on the hit.
Thank you, Mayor Warren and the council. Just two points before I get started. I did inquire about the agreement for the Harper Road transfer station. I haven't received a copy of that yet, but I know we voted to get our money back from that agreement, but without looking at the agreement to see if we have any sublease rights or any transferability rights, I think it's irresponsible and could cause irreparable harm to our town to take that investment back before we look at the options we have. So I'd ask that the council please have a motion to rescind on taking that investment back. That's the first point. Second point, I didn't see the reserve fund for CCUC listed as an asset for the county or for the town. We went over the financials. I'd like to maybe get that added to the report, because I feel like that is something that's added to the revenue from our constituents and something they need to know as a reserve fund for us and for our use for our infrastructure. Which brings me to my public comment today. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow Lewisville residents. I'm A.C. Hengler, and I'm here to ensure our town's infrastructure funds are used fairly and transparently. I support the lift station upgrades, but I have serious concerns. In-town residents have funded a $9 million CCUC reserve through water bill markups. $9 million of our funds are in a reserve account with CCUC. 100% from us, not outlying areas. The 2025 project now at $7.2 million has jumped from $2.5 million. We need to know the scope of the original project and why it became such a big project. The 500-gallon-per-minute lift station can serve 500 to 700 homes, 500 homes and 70 businesses, or 700 homes straight out. There's no way in that map that's been presented to us, we're going to fit 500 homes. There's additional capacity there. My suggestion is to make a smaller lift station of maybe 300 gallons per minute, and then reserve the right to add additional capacity if other places want to annex and then use it. But we should build a smaller station for just what's in the town right now. Additionally, the town attorney sought opinion from CCUC's ability to require outlying property owners to join Lewisville after connecting to our system. Please share that opinion. Without that requirement, we're losing control of our growth. So when we have people coming in and accessing our lift station without actually becoming part of the town, we lose the right to control kind of how that part of the town develops. We need to maintain that. The carrot should be, we will expand our capacity if you want to join the town, not build the capacity and then lose all control to bring them into the town later. So finally, please provide records in the 2023 requests, the proposals, engineering reports, four minutes to clarify the scope that expanded. This is about smart growth that protects Lewisville's future. Our dollars should serve the residents who paid them. I urge the council to address these concerns and share the requested records. We cannot just say we don't want to become Clemens. We must make a tough, responsible decisions that will avoid it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hengler. Next is Lynn Fulton.
Good evening, council. I'm Lynn Fulton, live 1529 Ranabout Road. As a matter of history, I served as the vice chairman of the Lewisville Utilities Committee. The lift station was one of the major projects that we reviewed during our hearings. Our recommendation was not to put the lift station where it is proposed today. I don't know that many people know that unless they pull the public records. We actually have a fellow member of the Utilities Committee here tonight. Our recommendation was to serve the citizens of Lewisville by putting it more towards North Street instead of down where it would service things to our west, outside of our town boundaries. Yes, it's been years, because we're no longer in session, but I urge you to postpone signing any agreement with CCUC for the town's citizens to come back together and look to see where a lift station is truly needed, especially in light of the annexation law changes that have been done by Raleigh. They've taken away our ability to annex properties. Now, I know the town attorney was going to do some research based on the briefing meeting. Don't know what that is yet, and hopefully we'll hear about that this evening. But I would ask, as you're finishing up your terms on council, to please think about the future of where we are and where we're going. Do we really want to put a lift station where it would serve potentially outside, citizens outside of the Town of Lewisville? Or do we want to have a lift station that will serve the citizens that are already in Lewisville and pay into that reserve fund every month via their water and sewer rates? Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next speaker to sign up is, looks like Mac Wilder.
I'm Mac Wilder, recently elected to be our new town councilman starting in January. I'm a Democrat.
Mr. Wilder, if you please address the council.
All right. I'm a Democrat. Ooh, wow. I'm a Democrat, but I'm going to start off with quoting Reagan. He said, "Trust, but verify." I came down here earlier this week. I saw on Facebook some comments about the lift station, that developers were going to benefit from the new lift station, and I, we don't have a complete set of plans here. If I had a complete set of plans I could look at, you could find the properties, how it's all provided, and you can do some research, it doesn't take too long, and find out if there are any entities that might benefit from the lift station, especially developers. I think if I was on the town council now, and I'm not, I wouldn't vote for this. I don't think a bid bust is such a bad idea if it keeps us from spending money we don't have. I also would like to take firsthand, I was a project manager at School of the Arts on a regular basis for six years. I shook the bushes to make sure we had contractors here on bid day, and we've rebid, bid bust, and saved money, significant amounts of money, on smaller projects. That's all.
Thank you. That's all of the folks that have signed up this evening. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Anyone at all? Thank you. We'll close this section of the public forum. Again, a reminder that there will be another opportunity at the very end of the meeting to address the council. Thank you very much. All righty. Angie, you have some appointments for us.
Yes, council. Tonight, I have for you the Lewisville Beautification Committee, LBC, has had a couple of vacancies in which staff advertised and received applications. We did receive three applications for the two vacancies, so town manager Stacy Tolbert and I did interviews for those. And in the meantime, we had one of those applicants to withdraw. So before you tonight, staff is requesting that council appoint Ewa Lorick and Ephraim Rivas to the LBC to complete the terms of those. Rivas to the LBC to complete the terms of those vacancies.
Any questions for Angie? Council, maintain a motion, please.
Move to approve the appointments to the Lewisville Beautification Committee.
Second.
Mr. Huffin makes the motion, Ms. Walsh makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, that is unanimous. Congratulations. We always are thrilled when people wish to serve on our boards and committees. We have so many opportunities to serve this town, so not only thank you to the recently appointed members, but also thank you to all the members who serve on a regular basis to provide counsel to the town council on issues that come before them. So, thank you very much. Alrighty, folks, we are at our first public hearing, and this is to receive comments on the approval for text amendments to our Unified Development Ordinance. Lynn, I believe you have the first up.
Organized just a little bit here. It's really great to see you guys this evening. I'm really glad to be here. Thank you, Angie. I did this earlier. Frank and I looked at this. I bet it has to do with the setting. Thank you, Veronica.
You can tell Lynn is not our IT specialist.
That would be our brilliant Veronica. And I use brilliant not lightly in that case. We have several text amendments to consider this evening. Let me put this in presentation mode for you guys to see. As the council, if you recall, earlier this year when we were working on the adoption of our new Unified Development Ordinance, we had several work sessions. And towards the end of those, there were a few places in the ordinance that the council felt like there could be some additions or improvements, including these three topics. The first is basically a refining of the definitions for scale of religious institutions in Lewisville. What we inherited in the ordinance from Winston-Salem Precyce County provided two sizes, neighborhood scale and community scale. Neighborhood scale was up to 600 seating capacity. Community scale was more than 600. The planning board and I talked about that quite a bit. Some concerns were raised about the possibility of a very large type of church finding properties in what is essentially a tight-knit residential area where that might not fit so well. And we talked through quite a bit of things, but the answer we came up with was to redefine those numbers. So, for neighborhood capacity, excuse me, for neighborhood scale, the capacity is now 300 seats. For community, it's more than 300 seats. In addition to that, community scale religious institutions are allowed only in specific districts other than residential districts at this point. So, it's a better fit for Lewisville. It's a better fit for the religious institutions that are here and may come. During the process of this, I spoke to quite a few religious institutions in the area, and the average seating capacity is about 250 to about 300. So, this is sort of right on target with those numbers. It's a pretty simple one. That's about all there is to that one. Is there any questions on that?
Very good, thank you. And Lynn, if I read the text amendment correctly, that an institution come before the planning board and ask for a variance that you could consider, did I read that correctly in the ordinance? Or is the 600 limit in any location, is there not an opportunity to review that size limit based upon the location?
Oh, I know what you're speaking of. Yes, the community scale, in both cases, a community scale, a religious institution especially, would require a site plan review and approval by the planning board. That's the point that you read. As opposed to just a very simple administrative review, it will require a little more detail. It's similarly to how the planning board handles subdivisions now. It would basically be review and approval of a technical site plan.
Very good, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions for Lynn? Alrighty, Lynn, you can slide. I don't anticipate there'll be a rush of people to speak on the text amendment. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody there who wishes to speak on this text amendment? Do you have two more text amendments?
Yes, sir.
Let's go on there.
We can't. I was going with the flow.
So, we're not going to do them one at a time? We're going to do them all at once?
Going with the flow.
Okay, thank you.
And I apologize. There is simply no way.
Thank you, Mayor Protown.
There is simply no way to come up with something visually appealing when you're talking about UDO text amendments, so I just had this one little slide here. Also, as part of adoption of our new Unified Development Ordinance, some tree preservation standards were added. However, during the process of review, both the planning board and council and others expressed concerns that they weren't really complete, that there were some additions that might be able to be made, some flexibility to be built in. So, I did some research on several other ordinances in towns our size and local ordinances and made some additions that I think helped build out and make the ordinance a little bit more complete. One thing that the tree preservation requirements does is standardize the measurement for trees. The landscape ordinance had one set of measurements. The new tree ordinance had a different set of measurements, and there was another spot in the ordinance. So, the planning board, we all agreed in the meeting that we will standardize it to what is called diameter at breast height, which is defined as four-point feet above grade. So, trees of a certain size, as part of this preservation plan, must be tagged or preserved. If it's eight inches in breast height, it should, in a buffer area, it is meant to be preserved. If it cannot be preserved, then there are rules for replacement that is an equal diameter to those that have to be removed. Trees with a 24-inch diameter at breast height, which is larger, more mature trees, are meant to be preserved across a site at all costs unless it's simply not possible. If it's not possible, we now have a built-in formula for replacing those that essentially equals the inch caliper of the tree to be removed with new plantings that are at least three-inch calipers. So, large planting to replace one that's being taken out. Excuse me. There are also now requirements for tree survey and submission of a tree preservation plan that takes into not only the size of the tree at the diameter of breast height, but the critical root zone, which includes the area of the root systems that the trees really need to survive and thrive. There is an overall goal of protecting on any site to be developed a minimum of 15% of existing trees, existing trees if they're there. That number is sort of a flat percentage and won't be changing from that. And as we do with many other types of items in our ordinance, we build in an alternative compliance option. It allows a lot of flexibility for the planning board and the town council to take into account unique circumstances that might have to do with new projects that theirs are now built into. Three questions?
There's a third one, too, isn't there?
Yeah, there is number three. Here it comes. Number three is actually open space requirements that have to do with new major residential subdivisions. There was some language in the proposed UDO that pretty much was decided we didn't like it. We didn't feel it was sufficient. We didn't feel it was a good fit for Lewisville. So, I did a significant amount of research on multiple other ordinances and how others sort of handle open space in different ways. The vast majority of localities handle basically a flat percentage. If you're going to develop this many acres, X amount of acres must be preserved, and there may be a few extra rules. Among the leaders here in the town, there was a desire to have a density-based standard as opposed to a flat percentage. So, in taking into account the different percentages from different towns, taking into account a model from the town of Brevard that actually proved to have a very useful tool that we could use as a root tool for ours, we've come up with some what I think are pretty great open space standards. The planning board was quite pleased with these. It lays out the intent. It provides a matrix for the density, pardon me, and it's a pretty simple matrix. It was more simple thanks to the help of Stacy, who talked with me through doing some little math on there. Basically, I'll read an example that's pretty simple. If a developer wants to subdivide a 25-acre tract of land into 50 lots or homes, that ends up being a density of two dwelling units per acre. You then take that density into one of the four columns provided and the multiplier provided in that column, which is square feet, that then gives you your total square feet of necessary required open space. So, for this project at two dwellings per acre, it would end up being about 1.4 acres of required open space. And for a density of two dwellings per acre, that's not really very dense. To give a good example of what happens with a larger, more dense development, excuse me, in contrast, if a tract of 50 acres was to be subdivided into 200 lots, that would end up with about 6.1 acres of required open space or about 12.2% of the dedication. And the reason for that density-based formula is because the open space, intent of open space, whether active or passive, is meant for the people in the community to enjoy. And having larger numbers of people in a community means more opportunity, with this formula, more opportunity for outdoor activity, outdoor amenities and that sort of thing. We also added in some examples of types of open space, including things like pocket parks, courtyards, larger parks, linear parks. We also included an amenity center because even though that might not be open space, it is an opportunity for positive recreation and active recreation, which promotes general health, safety and welfare, which is what planning and zoning is really all about. And I found some, well, provided, I asked for a little help, found some pretty good graphics, I think, if you looked at them in your packet compared to the graphics that were in the other one, these are quite a bit better. So, that's it. If you guys have any questions on the text amendments.
Very good. Questions for Lynn, just now?
Thank you, Lynn. This is a lot, a lot of work. And this is just, the UDO is really one of our base documents that we have here in the town, a very important document. So, for those that are in the audience, if you haven't read it, it takes about 10 weeks to sit down and read it. But I wanted to, in our comprehensive plan, we have some neighborhood activity centers that have been identified.
We do.
And I think those were identified about two or three years ago. How does the current open space kind of fit in with that neighborhood activity centers that isn't within the comprehensive plan?
That's a good question. The neighborhood activity centers are, or neighborhood centers are identified in the comprehensive plan around certain, mostly crossroads or areas that, around the Beltway that's coming.
Correct.
The Lewisville-Vienna, Robin Hood Road interchange is a perfect example. Those areas are meant to be compact, mixed-use neighborhoods. That's why they're called neighborhood centers. These standards will apply across the board with those. There are no seriously different amounts of required open space for neighborhood centers, but there is the option for the alternative compliance in both this plan and in the neighborhood centers. The amount of open space in a neighborhood center, especially if we're looking at denser population, which is what we want there, is going to be greater overall. Does that help?
That does, very much so. Thank you.
Any other questions for Lynn? Very good. So, and I'll repeat my statement that I started 15 minutes ago. This is a public hearing on the text amendments for the Unified Development Ordinance. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in support of or in opposition, too? Please come up. Anyone wishing to speak in support of or opposition, too, please come up, state your name and address. If you'll hold your comments to three minutes, that would be great.
A.C. Hengler, 905 Limberloss Lane. I'm in support of it. I just want to mention that this UDO is enforced in the town limits. And using this UDO is one of those things that can't happen outside of our town limits. So, if we allow folks to hook into our town resources and use them, they won't be subject to this UDO unless they annex in and become part of the town. So, it's important that we remember that when making our decisions about other things. So, this UDO is only applicable to in-town. It is not applicable to outside of town. So, if you don't control what goes into the town using the leverage you have, then you'll never be able to do that in the future. So, just want to make that point about UDO.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please come up, state your name and address.
Kelly Rivas, 1335 Lasley Road. Ms. Hunt, you brought up the neighborhood activity centers. I got involved with the town. Yeah, Tom's laughing. In 2001, because of a neighborhood activity center, which actually was designed as a small business area that had nothing that would even use open space or anything like that. So, and I looked at, and when I was looking at the comp land, it's back in the same place it was back then. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing. Councilmembers, what's your pleasure?
I provided, if you would like to use it, I provided a draft consistency determination and motion statement. The ones that I began preparing for our public hearings, it should be in your packet.
Are we required for specific language?
It does. Basically, by using, by using the motion statement that was included, it automatically incorporates determinations of consistency with the comprehensive land use plan and the reasonableness of, well, with text amendments, it doesn't entice reasonableness, just consistency. So, by reading that draft motion to approve or deny, it covers all the bases.
Lynn, give us the first three words of the draft motion, other than "I move."
Two, to approve this request based upon the consistency determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet as may be amended. Did that not get included? It should have been in your packet.
So, if you go ahead and read the appropriate motion, I'm sure Dr. Sadler will make that motion.
Would you like me to bring it to you?
Yeah.
You might want to go ahead and get the one for the next one out, too.
On page 40. I move to approve this request based upon the consistency determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet as may be amended.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Very good. Dr. Sadler makes the motion.
As long as I don't have to repeat it.
You don't have to repeat it. Mr. Lawson makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Very good, Lynn. I don't think you get any pause. You're back up again.
Thank you. This one does have much more visual appeal than the text amendments. We do have a rezoning request in front of us this evening. We do have a rezoning request in front of us this evening. This is case number L-114. And it's a request to rezone a parcel of land from RS20, single-family residential, to the Lewisville Downtown One Conditional District, LD1C. It's kind of a mouthful. The tax parcel ID for the record is 5875-854964. It's been assigned a new address, the location is 6732 Shallerford Road. Of course, in the downtown district, it is a conditional rezoning. The planning board met on October 8th at its regular meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request, along with one other suggestion that I'll get to in a moment as we move through our discussion here. The basics, the property measures about 2.33 acres. It is located in the downtown overlay, currently vacant. Most likely, I did check the records, pretty much since the town incorporated, it's been zoned RS20 and was probably zoned that before the town incorporated and took over its own zoning. The Lewisville Comprehensive Plan designates this area as the downtown place type. And this particular parcel is located in what we call the downtown core area, the DCA, just outside of the downtown gateway area, the DGA. It borders the DGA, it's sort of the line between the two, right through that roundabout. It's a simple vicinity map showing the location of the property here in the heart of downtown. The zoning map will show that there's a nice mix of different types of zoning, LD2, LD1, some limited business, highway business and residential in this area, which is to be expected, since this is located in the downtown core, to see a mix of zoning. The request to rezone to LD1C is the preferred district identified in the Unified Development Ordinance for this area. This is just simply an aerial photograph. I'm sure everyone in the room knows the parcel. It's right at the corner of Heritage and Shallerford. It's just outside of the gateway area, but it's still kind of a little gateway when you come around, come around that curve. This I just included to show that we do have a complete site plan that has been submitted by the applicant. It has been reviewed by the Technical Review Committee. Additions and changes have been made, it's been reviewed by the planning board, is also approved as part of their, excuse me, also included as part of their recommended approval. Couple of other things I wanted to go over very quickly about the property. That's our motion statement flying around over there. Couple of other pieces of information about the property. It is served by Public Water and Sewer Services. The principal access is of course off of Shallerford Road, which is designated as a major thoroughfare by the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. When it comes to consistency, there were several determinations that went into it, and I'll get to that. I wanted to be able to review some of these things with you first. I pulled up this slide in particular, because it's not the easiest to see, but towards the top, you'll see a dashed ellipse that says possible concrete island extension. That has come up as an item of discussion since the TRC, when that was added, from multiple parties. That was suggested as a possibility by NC DOT. It was not the applicant's, nor was it Mr. Steve Causey, the engineer, nor was it something that NC DOT said, this is going to have to happen. They said it was a possibility. Steve and I have been trying to get a little more information from NC DOT, but quite frankly, have had a hard time getting someone to give us a better response. So, we did leave it on the map since NC DOT did suggest it as a possibility. But when I'm finished speaking, I'll let Steve speak a little bit more to that. But I did want to point that out. Most likely on Shallerford Road, I'm giving you more details on this one since it's a downtown district. Most likely, the access on Shallerford Road will be something like a right-in, right-out. There will not be an option for a left turn, simply because it's so close to the traffic circle and so many other locations. There will be a secondary entrance that's been proposed in the town right-of-way for Heritage Drive that will be both in and out. There's a little more follow-up with on that, too. There is a sequence to my logic, I promise. Here is the basic floor plan. Since this is located in the downtown district, floor plan is required. This is a three-unit retail office-type structure. And I'll explain the word elevation. In the planning world, we use the term elevation to describe depictions like this. So if you all hear me using the word this elevation or that elevation, basically what it means is the depiction of the structures that are shown here. Mrs. Jung Hope will be speaking to this, and I'm sure she'll have much more to say. But I did just want to review a few things. There are quite strict standards about architectural character and appearance in the downtown overlay. Good examples of what this one shows is significant amount of transparency with windows along the first floor of the frontage. The depiction on the bottom would be the one that you would see if you're facing the structure directly from Shallerford Road. So you'll see the transparency, canopies, multiple roof lines to create differences in character and textures. The colors that the applicants have discussed are charcoal grays, lighter grays, creamy whites and creamy beiges, all of which will fit within the recommended color scheme of the downtown overlay. These can kind of make it look a little bit black and white, simply because of their nature, but that is not the goal for it, to be, to be black and white. I think Jung said it, but the goal of this structure is to be small-town modern. So, that's what we've been going with here. These are the side views that you will see. The top view is what you would see if you were, say, driving from Shallerford Road towards Wilson to get onto, say, maybe Interstate 40. That's what you'll see on your left. The bottom one will be if you're coming into town from the gateway area. On the right side is what you'll see coming in. During the planning board hearing on October 8th, five actually residents who live on Heritage Drive expressed concerns about increased traffic and related factors should this project be approved. Reasonable enough considerations. Pardon me. During deliberations, the planning board decided to include, along with its recommendation for overall approval, a recommendation that the town council, should it decide it to be necessary, take into consideration some things like traffic calming measures or signage that would help reduce impacts to Heritage Drive. And I've discussed some things with our town Public Works Director. Because of the, this next slide is an aerial, it's just a photo that I took, a Google photo that I took straight from the internet. Because of this concrete apron, and because of a little bit more of an extension of an apron, the entrance on Heritage Road is going to end up being pretty much right behind that tree on the left. That really isn't sufficient space for something like a speed cushion or a speed hump. In the Public Works Director's opinion and mine, that's certainly something that I just want to make sure you guys knew about, that we had talked about, that was mentioned at planning board. The other thing was signage, and I spoke with the mayor and John about this, too. I think one thing, it was suggested to come up with an idea about what that might look like to help guide the residents' thoughts. Something we can do here, looking at it from this view, could be signs where the public right-of-way ends that say something like, private drive, no entry, something like that, to signal that this is a private road beyond this point. And since this will be an entrance/exit at that point, coming out on to Heritage to turn right to get to Shallerford, a no-left-turn sign would probably be a very good idea to help prevent people from turning onto Heritage inadvertently, and then having to turn around in folks' driveways, which was one of the concerns that was presented at planning board. So I did want to include that because of it. I want to ask Steve at this point, if he will come up and talk a little bit more about what he knows regarding this possible island extension, if you don't mind. Unless, I'm sorry, the board has questions at this point.
I don't want to hear from Steve.
You're from Steve and wait. Okay, very good.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Steve Causey, Allied Design, 4720 Kestrel Mill Road, Winston-Salem, 27103. We obviously helped prepare the site plan you're seeing tonight. When we started back in June, middle of June, we knew the driveway would be an issue. It's one of the first things we typically do, is work with DOT to try to figure out where our connections can be. I reached out to Scott Jones, who was the Assistant District Engineer at that time, and he had seen the property, I guess it'd come in several times for previous site plan reviews, and he shared with me their records from the previous plan reviews. They have interest in controlling the access from this property, and as Lynn referenced, they want to force a right-in, right-out situation. And I think their plan at the time from previous site plan reviews was the island extension would accommodate that. So, he discussed the extension of the island to the limits, to the eastern limits of the property. So that's what we've shown. Fast forward through the TRC review, Scott Jones is gone, we're dealing with David Bankhead, and I think you've seen in the TRC review minutes, what he stated is that we'll basically work it out during the permitting. But, safety is a concern, of course, proximity to the roundabout, he references that, but the decision ultimately will lie with the district engineer when we go to get the driveway permit. So, that's where we stand today, as far as, as much as we know about the potential driveway. Certainly glad to answer any other questions related to the site plan, it probably speaks for itself, but I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. Council members, any questions for Steve or Lynn?
Yes, any questions?
If I may interrupt just one moment, council, when you do ask, if you'll speak into your mics, Veronica's having trouble picking everything up online for our viewers on Facebook and Channel 6, if you will, just speaking to your mics. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve, for coming up. Just for some clarity, I definitely want the clarity on the safety issue with that, and you've mentioned that extended concrete. I'm not clear on what is recommended and what the, if the five residents that were concerned that live on Heritage, if they were content with those possibilities of just that extension. I just need some more detail on what has or hasn't been recommended for sure on that for the safety and for their acceptance and feeling comfortable with the recommendation.
Now, the island I'm speaking about is out in Shallerford Road. I mean, that would affect, I guess, the general traffic, maybe not just specifically Heritage? I don't know. Are you asking about the Heritage traffic?
Well, the roundabout area there, where the Heritage individuals?
Okay. This would be actually east of that, of the Heritage Drive. It'd be, there is an island there currently, as you come out of the roundabout headed east. It would basically be an extension of that concrete median that's there, I guess, median or island. They've suggested possibly extending that.
Okay.
Do you have another question for Steve?
No, do you want to address that same issue?
I just wanted to address the issue that Councilwoman brought up. Kind of the point we're at now is, this is a state-maintained road. So NC DOT, in the end, is going to do what it feels like is in the best interest, but is going to, I feel quite sure, with facilitation from Steve and from myself, will work with the residents in discussions about is this extension necessary or not. But right now, there's not really a recommendation for it, or an idea that we think we need this. That's what we're trying to work out with DOT, and that's the one element of the site plan that I wanted to point out to everyone, because it's been a point of discussion. Very often, items like this get worked out during the actual permitting and driveway construction process after the site plan is approved. But because of the nature of what it is, this is why I left it.
So, in other words, you represent those individuals as you ask the DOT, I know it is their project, for that extra safety recommendation.
Right. John Hannah and I and Steve can certainly work with NC DOT, and I especially can work with neighbors to make sure, we try to come up with the best arrangement possible there.
All right, thank you.
Did you have another question for Mr. Colby?
Doctor, I think you were next.
Yeah, thank you. So, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, why do we need to have the secondary entrance?
I'll ask Steve to come back up on that one, too. There's, let me let Steve address, and then I'll follow up.
Plain and simple, just circulation through the property, alternate means of ingress and egress. One thing we hear a lot is from the fire department, the ability to get through a site without having to back up, turn around. So it just provides good access through the site, multiple points of ingress and egress, doesn't force all the traffic to one particular location. So just kind of a common practice to disperse traffic as best we can.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I, yeah, probably not for you, Steve, thank you. All right. The second question is, for now, is what is the plan with the two trees and the light pole that's there currently?
The plan, as we have discussed it, is to preserve the trees, that the light pole, some of those utilities are going to be moved underground. Steve, I can't remember if the light pole's going away entirely, or if it might stay, but there are going to be changes to the electrical infrastructure that's right there, and those trees are meant to be preserved. One thing, and this was going to be my last kind of point about this one, that sort of rolls right off of that, is there is a component of alternative compliance requested with this. In the packet I provided, Mrs. Jung Hope provided a nice summary request of why they're asking for alternative compliance. The primary component of the alternative compliance is what would otherwise be a requirement in the downtown overlay to have a build-to line, that at least 50% of the structure would have to be built on the build-to line, which is a certain distance setback from the public right-of-way. And you see great examples of it as you drive up and down Shallerford Road. It's meant for pedestrian connectivity. It's meant to create that sense of easy pedestrian access and closeness. But because this, actually had to think about it, this parcel is the first one, I think, that's been looked at, that has a variable front property line instead of a perfect rectangle, like most of the downtown properties are. It proved to be a really significant challenge in the building design. It was going to shift the building to pretty much the right side of the property, basically squish it up, make it narrow. It was going to cause issues with access, with driveway access and those kinds of things. So, that Mrs. Hope is going to be speaking tonight, and she can let you know about how her thoughts go. But I did want to point that out, that that is a component of this one that might be a little different than some of the other plans you've seen for downtown overlay.
Mayor, I have one more question. I'm sorry. Thank you for these questions. So when we talk about this secondary entrance, and from a point of consistency across that downtown core area, is there like two or three properties where the doctor's offices are at, that's just one entrance going in? I'm trying to think of, do we have other properties where we have secondary entrances? Because it doesn't seem like it's consistent with what we currently have.
I cannot think of one, knowing what I know of the geography of downtown, where there is anything except the primary entrance at the front of the structure. As Steve pointed out, though, in this case, the, having a second entrance, the primary goal of- the primary goal of that is fire safety and through traffic, and by cutting off one of those, let's say we cut off the Heritage Road access, then you would only have the right-in, right-out, which wouldn't really make any sense. And if we didn't have the Shaliford Road access, that would probably impede the ability for the brown box trucks to come and go, so, some of the points that Steve made. And as far as a planner, that's about as far as my knowledge goes on that, that subject, as far as having the two entrances, and why it would be crucial or necessary, or not necessarily necessary.
So was it considered without a secondary entrance at any point?
It was not. I think from the beginning, the initial site plan included a secondary entrance. The site plan went through multiple iterations before we got to this one, I think four or five, but there was always a plan to have two entrances, the one on Heritage and the one on Shaliford Road.
Thank you, Lynn.
Mayor, I do have a question. I counted about 30 spots, plus or minus a couple for loading zones. Remind me, are the spots dependent on the size of the lot, which I think you said was about two and a half acres, a little bit under that, or the size, square footage of the building?
It's actually dependent on the nature of what is taking place in the building, to the most, for the most part, that a general office would have X amount of parking spaces per square footage of office space. In this case, I've reviewed the potential uses, those that are allowed in the LD1 district, and counted the parking spaces. In the LD1 district, there is also an up to 30% reduction in the otherwise normal required amount of parking, and this does take a little bit of advantage of that. The number of spaces work with the plans for what will be in those offices. Does that help?
That's perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Lynn, I'm going to put you on the spot. Give me your best estimate on the, once you exit the traffic circle, that distance right there to the proposed entrance on Shaliford Road.
There was a comment, a comment by the NC DOT engineer, that it's about 100 feet, it's about 100 feet. Generally, at a straight T-intersection, cross-intersection, they would require that an entrance like this on Shaliford be at least 100 feet from that intersection, but since this is a traffic circle and there's some differences with the curvature, it wasn't exactly 100 feet, but it was around 100 feet. Is that correct, Mr. Causey?
Yeah.
If you could see the bearing and distances labeled on the site plan, the bearing that , the distance along Shaliford is about 152 feet, so you can, give you some comparison of, I believe, that may, you can kind of see proportional to that bearing.
I had pulled up the site plan in PDF format, but because of this thing that's going on with the settings, it doesn't want to show. So we'll stick to this close-up that we have in the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, Steve, for clarifying. I knew it was at least 100 feet, so it's actually more like 150.
And just kind of as a reference point for me, the distance from the Williams Road exit into that traffic circle to the entrance to the gas station, rough footage?
That's a good one. So say again?
From where you exit the traffic circle there, coming off 421?
From 421, on to...
The distance from where you come out of the traffic circle into the gas station?
William, and then...
Shell.
The gas station, Shell Station.
Oh, the Shell Station, that's definitely just a matter of...
It's very close.
Tens of feet from the Shell Station. From the point that you get to the actual aspect of this property, would probably be cause or two, somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500 feet, I would think, maybe a little bit more, a little bit more than that.
Just for clarification, that particular secondary entrance would be in and out, is that correct?
The Heritage Road secondary entrance would be in and out.
Right.
Perhaps with the suggestion of no left turn on exit. So yes, folks could come into that exit, turn around, and come back out that exit and turn right, or they could go through and cut through to Shaliford.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would there also be an in on the Shaliford Road entrance?
Shaliford would have an in and an out, that's it.
You have an in and out both, though, right?
Yeah, right in, right out.
Right in, right out.
Yeah, that's the current plan.
Council members, any other questions?
I do. I'm sorry, I'm belaboring this issue here with the secondary entrance. So you talk about the fire department and that being accessible. If that were to be capped off, is there any current ordinance that we have that would prohibit us from capping that, that secondary entrance?
There's nothing in our ordinance that would cap that off. There may, that would prevent that from being capped off. There may be something in the fire code that I'm not aware of. The TRC notes, I did review those carefully earlier on, and I believe I included, let me see if Fire and Safety made any comments on the TRC notes. Yes, Mark Johnson, the fire marshal, he did not call attention to anything necess- necessary about the entrance or the exit. Principally, what Mr. Johnson focused on was making sure hydrants were available, sprinkler system, internal things like that, permits, but he did not mention anything specifically about a fire code rule, that there would have to be a secondary entrance there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Lynn. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Anybody wish to come forward and speak? Let's start with the proponents, if we could. The proponents, I'm sorry.
Before we move forward, could we let the applicant?
They would be a proponent, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think she'd be a proponent, Mrs. Hope, Jung Hope, come and do the thing that you did at the planning board, and Ross, they are the prospective buyers.
Hi, we're the applicants. One aspect about, I know we're...
Please state your name, please, it would be helpful, and your address.
Jung Hope.
And Ross Houston.
So we are the UPS owners, store owners, been here for many, many years. The whole purpose of we're doing this was we were, try to stay here, in town, we fell in love with the town and everything else. One of the reasons I know a concern about the entrance for the egress, ingress, and all these things, the other aspect, we have to remember, heritage side, we only can get out, right out. Only way you can get in there because of the roundabout, you have to circle back all the way to the roundabout to come back into the left in, right out. For the commercial perspective, not only for the in and exit, that is detrimental for traffic, for we don't, we're not going to have a lot of people actually have a problem with, first of all, the building has to be, we're going to use one side of the building as a UPS store, the other's going to be either, you know, we're told about the permitted usage for yogas and coffee shops and wineries and whatever we wanted to do, but that has to be actually attracted to the people who wants to do the business in that corner, the beautiful corner, beautiful building we're going to build. If the traffic coming in as one way to coming in, have to make it all the way, turn to the roundabout to come back into the Shaliford, if that's the only entrance we have, not only just, I don't know about the fire codes or DOT issues, but for general usage, flexibility of consumers or buyers or people who come in, customers, to come in and out, the building is not going to be very attractive for the commercial purpose. This is a commercial building, so when we were designing, with the designers, engineers, we had to thought about all those things, following rules that we follow with the town rules, as well as should it be attractive to the other business as well? That was one thing that I was going to talk about. In, heritage entrance can be to come in and out, you can come in, right in, left out, you can actually come out both ways, but Shaliford, which is, would be great if we can in and out and both people come in and right in, left out, you know, either way, but it's very restricted there. We cannot do anything other than right out, and people have to turn around to come in. So that was one of the aspects, we have, we use both ends because of that's a public entrance area, not the, we're not touching private area, so, but that was, I know that caused some concern for the, the heritage side of folks, but it, traffic to, people asking about the loading zones and this and that, that little loading zones, people, truck has to come in, but the small truck, the UPS delivery truck, but the rest of them, other regular people come in and out of there. It's a small space for, that also, please be aware that that's 2,000, 2.3 acres land. We're only using 6,000 square foot, there's about one and a half acres behind, we eventually will develop further, more, for some sort of, we have to go through this all over again later on, but if we get to expand the buildings or more commercial buildings for the usage letter, one entrance is going to be very restricted and not going to be very attractive for the commercial purpose. That's all I was going to say. If anything else you want to say?
I think if the property wasn't located next to the roundabout, obviously we wouldn't need the, the extension, and we could go right or left in if it was, you know, down another half mile. So I think it's, the layout or the, the location of that property there, it just makes it a little bit difficult just to have a right in and right out off of Shaliford Road.
Again, that's just one building, and it's 200 acres, we're using one third of it right now. So eventually, that's going to be further developed, further things going to be done, not for attacking much of the heritage side, we want to stick around on the front side, heritage side, I mean the Shaliford side, probably, and one entrance is not going to work. Pretty much, we have to just rethink that whole thing, whole planning of this target that we will go to do. I mean, really, we had spent a lot of time with engineers and designers to get that actually at work. So, I mean, you mentioned, you mentioned about possibility of a one entrance or blocking open another entrance, people can actually, can come and turn around and go back now, I can see that, but it's going to be very tough for people coming in from only Shaliford side, because only we can come in because they're blocked. Now even DOT is talking about the, we have to extend that island in the front, possibly. So that gives us some, so painful thought, thought about this whole, it's going to work on, if that one entrance. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in support of? In support of? All righty. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to you, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Mr. Mayor, while they are coming forward, I did want to make council aware that we did receive one written comment from Guy Oldacker in opposition of this item. I will email this to council tomorrow, and it will also be made part of the official minutes for this meeting.
Thank you. Please come forward, state your name and address, if you would.
Back again. Good evening, my name's Josh Krezel. My address is 464 Heritage Drive. My family and I own Heritage Drive from our home all the way to where it connects to the roundabout. I'm here tonight to kind of represent the folks on Heritage Drive, those that are here and those that are not, like Guy, that had to send his stuff in. I just kind of want to start by saying that I'd like to talk about just asking everyone to deny the request to rezone this from residential to commercial. The safety concern that I brought up in the planning board meeting last month is immediate and obvious. The proposed commercial driveway would come out on Heritage Drive directly at the roundabout, where our neighborhood, schools, bus stops are all located. Adding commercial traffic and delivery vehicles at that exact spot creates a clear and preventable danger. The planning board recognized there were safety concerns and recommended a DOT safety study, which I didn't hear mentioned earlier, but they had asked for a DOT safety study and increased signage when they unanimously passed the measure last month. However, the section of the road in question isn't under DOT jurisdiction. It was taken from our property by eminent domain in 2011, is now owned and maintained by the town of Lewisville. I have a copy of that document, if anybody wants to see it. That means that the DOT cannot conduct a safety assessment, and that the responsibility for traffic safety at this location now rests entirely with the town. On top of that, the planning board made its recommendations without the town attorney present to advise on jurisdiction or procedure. They approved a rezoning that conflicts with the town's own 2022 comprehensive plan, which clearly designates this parcel as utilities under land use on page 22, and conserved open space under the development status on page 23, which states in the description that it is for parks, open spaces, conservation, and utility buffers, and other areas not available for development. Those designations exist to protect residents from exactly this kind of incompatible use. So at this point, we have a rezoning recommendation made without legal counsel, relying on a state agency that has no authority over this road, for a property the town's own plan says should be remained as protected open space, and all of it happening at a location where small children's, children gather daily. I'm not against growth, and I understand the desire to attract business, but development should follow the town's own adopted plan and put safety first. I respectfully ask that the town council deny this rezoning request based on these facts. If the town allows a rezoning that contradicts its adopted land use plan, it undermines the public trust and sets a precedent for spot zoning anywhere else in town. The families who live here simply want the same thing the town's plan already promises, safe streets, responsible land use, and development that fits the character of our community. Thank you for taking the time to listen and protecting the safety integrity of our neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Fred Franklin. Excuse me, I live at 1420 Conrad Sawmill Road. I had not really intended to speak tonight, but something struck me as I was listening to the presentation. The, one thing to keep in mind is that the traffic island that may or may not end up on Shaliford Road could be good or it could be bad. If it's put in to prevent people from exiting this place and making a left turn, then it would be good. The bad side would be folks coming in from the traffic circle, trying to get into the pharmacy and the professional buildings, then that island would probably present some problems for them. As far as folks coming from this direction toward the traffic circle, obviously with that island there, it'd be pretty hard for them to make a left turn into the facility. Reason I make those statements, excuse me, is to lead up to saying that it seems to me that if you restricted the flow of traffic into that property with a right turn only, no matter what, would be outstanding. Then you could still have the right turn out only to proceed back this way on Shaliford Road. If all traffic that was not coming this way on Shaliford Road were to be forced to Heritage Drive, that would be fantastic in my mind, because what it does is takes them directly to the traffic circle, where they could enter the traffic circle safely, proceed on around, and either go on down Shaliford or down Williams Road. This is the first time we've ever had a piece of property to come up with a site plan... up with a site plan at a traffic circle. I have a feeling there's going to be more opportunities in the future. I'm not sure how to address those. Uh, it's one of the things that when we got our first traffic circle in town, uh, it took people time to learn how to drive it. Uh, the second one, same thing. And the last one, the big one, it took people time to try, uh, to learn to drive it. You could almost tell anytime somebody's from out of town because they don't know what to do. Uh, I think, I truly hope that we as drivers are trainable. Uh, this is going to be a learning process for everybody. Uh, I would highly encourage that outgoing traffic from this parcel be restricted in any ways that only allow the right turnout coming this way on Shallowford and everything else has to go back to the traffic circle so that there it can make safe left turns or go straight on across on Shallowford Road. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Mary Ellen Majors and I live at 482 Heritage Drive. I've lived there off and on, mostly on, since 1988. First of all, I want to say, you listened to us. You listened to our complaints last week and he addressed them. He took the wind out of my sails. One thing I want to mention today, I spent an hour with a neighbor looking at that drawing up there at the corner. We were measuring. We, I think our measurements are a little different than what you had indicated. But my concern is the traffic circle being so close. And I agree with Fred. Yeah, people don't know how to drive us through traffic circles. But it is in the DMV for North Carolina, I looked, it is in there. There is, as we mentioned, Ms. Welch and I talked, there's a blind spot there. And it's a, it's a very small traffic circle. And I'm concerned cars would come approaching the circle, see a side entrance into the facility and turn in and realize they can't get in, or there's a truck coming out and they can't get in. And they've once turned into the traffic circle, they, they have to turn around somehow, either in the first driveway they come to or at the end of their cul-de-sac and come all the way back up again. So when I was here a month ago, I was under the impression we only had the in and the out on Shallowford Road. I was very surprised when I heard that they were going to have this secondary. I was always opposed to that idea and so I still am. I just think it's, I'm a pedestrian also, and that big yellow sign with the stick figure walking, that means nothing to people driving when I'm trying to cross the crossroad. So I don't know that signage would be very good. So I would be opposed to the secondary entrance on Heritage Road and I will pass judgment on the aesthetics of the building on the corner. I'm just more concerned with traffic and accidents. Also, that is the only egress for Heritage Drive. If there was a fire and a fire truck was there, or there was an accident, two cars hitting each other due to the blind spot, we can't get out of this, we could not get out of Heritage Drive if there was any congestion at that traffic circle. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Keith Vance and I live at 929 Dalton Road in Louisville. And I'm also the property owner and owner of Louisville Drug, right across the street from, uh, from this proposed development. And, and part, co-owner of the medical offices in, behind Louisville Drug. And my concern is, uh, the little elliptical island that is, uh, that may or may not happen according to DOT. Uh, that, that area where the island is indicated, uh, is pretty much enough for one, one vehicle to turn left into our, our businesses. And if that, if that island is approved or is included as is, that is not only going to impede a left turn into my business, uh, as, as you all talked about, you're concerned about access as well, um, that, uh, they'll also cause, if somebody is stuck trying to turn left and cars are coming out of, out of town, that's going to cause traffic to back up into the circle and really just cause a big old mess, just for lack of a better way of putting it. Um, I, I just, I timed it this morning when I got to work. It was about 10 till 8:00 and I sat there for 45 seconds to turn left because there was so much traffic coming out of town. If I would have been, if I, if that island would be in place and I would have, and I would have sat there for 45 seconds, how many cars would have been backed up into the, into that circle? So that, you know, I know there's people going to speak to a lot of different things about the, about the development and I, and, you know, and everybody has, has their own interests. But, you know, that, that is a big concern for me because we see, I, I just did an informal poll of the optometry practice and the, and the dental practice today, and they, they estimate that they see about, uh, between the two of them, about 60 patients a day. And High Point University Dental, um, also has students who rotate through there and there, there are a lot of students and a lot of employees. So they, they track, they account for about 100, for about 100 car, you know, trips in and out of there a day, and most of them in their individual cars. And then that's not counting my business. And we average probably about 250 transactions a day, uh, in, at Louisville Drug, you know, people coming in and out of there. And if you, um, I, so I invite you just to come down and just, just observe during a busy time of day and to see, and watch the traffic flow. Uh, you know, uh, that, you know, your eyes don't lie. And, uh, it's, uh, that, that would really, that would really cause a mess. And it would not, it would not be an improvement for the town. It would, uh, it would really, it would, it would be a det, it would be a detriment to our business. I mean, we, we're one of the originals, I feel like, in, uh, under the, under the new plant, you know, the new, um, you know, town comprehensive plan, when we built our building 14 years ago, we, everybody was excited because we were kind of started to get to, to see some of the planning come to fruition. And, you know, we've been, I think we've been a good citizen for the, for the community and, uh, want to continue to be that way. But that's really going to hurt us if that, if that's included. So I'd just like for the, as, as you guys consider the rezoning request tonight, I'm not asking you to, uh, you know, that, they have put a lot of work into this and I'm not, I'm not here to, uh, you know, say anything negative toward, you know, toward the engineering firm or the, the developers or anything like that. I just want, I just want that to be considered before this is approved because it's, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Come on up.
Hi, guys. How are you? Um, my name is Michael McNeil. I live at 470 Heritage Drive, the Big Santa House. Um, a little nervous. Don't do this very often.
Take your time. You're doing great.
Okay. I, um, just want to say I stand here in agreement with my fellow Heritage Drive neighbors, respectfully requesting denial of the proposed building project located by Shallowford Road, uh, near the roundabout. The propos, the proposed development is not consistent with the land use vision and development procedures that were adopted by the town and printed in the Louisville Tomorrow Handbook. I also wanted to touch on safety. As a FedEx contractor with over 20 years of logistics experience, and I've owned up to 60 trucks on the triad, okay? The proposed plan is a huge safety concern due to the influx of not only cars, but delivery trucks. You got to understand, you may not realize, that it's not just UPS that delivers to the UPS store. It's Amazon, it's FedEx, and it's USPS. So you could have potential, and they're not small, because I own them, they're 20 feet. So you could potentially have all four of them there with the school bus stop in the middle of that traffic circle. It's just a logistic nightmare. I don't think it's safe at all. Um, also, if you look around the triad, okay, anywhere, they've been doing it for 20 some years. Every FedEx truck is owned by a contractor. They're, we're all independent contractors. Um, you'll find that there is not a single one, including the one in Louisville, that is not in a shopping center. The one on Renolda Road, shopping center. The one on Haynesville Boulevard, shopping center. Throughway, throughway shopping center. It's because of the traffic, safety. It's the only way that you can accommodate that many trucks, drivers, you know. There's not a single one that's in a, that's in a, near a roundabout with the school bus stop. Not to mention that our road is privately owned. So when people pass by and they miss it, they're stuck. It's not very wide. You got to turn around. You got to keep, we maintain that. So my, um, this proposed location just does not provide adequate safe room to accommodate the influx of traffic that UPS store, or if you put a nail salon on one side and you have a coffee shop on the other side. It just doesn't work. I'm not, I'm for growth. If it's a doctor's office that's got 20, 25 people to work there, it's different. But it's just, the entrance going in off Heritage, you're just asking for it, for something to happen. So anyways, um, in the Louisville Tomorrow Handbook, transportation and mobility is referenced on page 109, Strategy 1.3. It states, reduce traffic congestion and promote safety by monitoring zoning and site plans proposals. Enforce the town's access management program, limiting separating driveways, two, creating shared access, three, keeping drivers, uh, driveways from being too close to intersections, and four, encouraging the cross connection of parking areas. This proposed plan does not follow the above mentioned. The proposed plan will no way reduce traffic congestion or promote safety. In fact, it's going to do the exact opposite by creating even more traffic congestion posing a great safety concern for all. We would like denial of the zoning approval and a plan brought back that meets the standards stated in Louisville Tomorrow Handbook. Thank you.
Thank you. You did great. Next speaker. Yes, sir.
My name is Rick Stepp and I live at 474 Heritage Drive. My wife and I have lived on Heritage Drive since 1991. I speak on behalf of the residents and adjacent property owners. When we moved here, it was during the time that incorporation was being discussed and voted on. At first, I was opposed to it. I did not want to pay higher taxes. But in listening to the arguments for incorporation, I changed my mind. I did not want to see, to be annexed into Clemmons or Winston-Salem. And I did not want Louisville to become another Clemmons or Currenville with strip mall after strip mall. This banning of strip malls was one and is one of the foundational cornerstone in the birth of the town of Louisville. In the Town Louisville Downtown Design Guidelines dated 2014, Area 2, which the area we're talking about, was designated as residential or small offices, not, is not retail business. This project is in direct violation of this guideline. I ask, is this project needed? No, it's not. We already have a UPS store. Area 2 is residential. There are several other locations that are more suitable for commercial development. The old shopping center, uh, beside Town Square, the old post office, et cetera. By voting for this project, you're going against one of the corner, core reasons that Louisville was incorporated. You open the door to even more strip malls and commercial development. And once you open this door, you won't be able to close it. Keep Area 2 as it was intended to be. I ask that in, in the very least, you table this project for now and take the time to see that it is not fit within the guidelines for the downtown, uh, downtown design guidelines. We are residents of Heritage Drive. It's residential neighborhood. We don't want businesses on the end of our street. And lastly, on a personal note, I'd like to ask y'all a question. You don't have to answer me. I just ask you to be honest with yourself. If this was your neighborhood, your street and your front yard, would you want this? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Ball and I live at 451 Heritage Drive. And this is all I had to work with today. So I'm going to read off of here. Um, I've been a resident on Heritage Drive since 2008. So I do stand here, represent all my neighbors.
Can you stand just a little closer to the microphone?
Can you hear me better? Oh, there we go. I can tell. Yep. Um, represent all my neighbors that are here today on our street. Um, I do want to start off to say that I, um, you know, respectfully do not agree with the rezoning proposed 46724 Shallowford Road. Um, the plan to rezone the property from residential to the downtown conditional zoning includes the entrance and exit off Shallowford Road and at the top of Heritage Drive, which is just a very poor plan. Um, like Keith Vance said, if you just go stand there and spend any time right there, you'll see how congested it is, how many people walk by, how many cars almost hit each other. Um, it's just very congested already. Um, in a review of the comprehensive plan, I noted, and I'm not an expert at reading these plans, but I did note that the land was not meant to be for commercial use. Um, there, uh, there are notes, it was for conserved open space and, uh, on page 23 and 24, and land-in-waiting on page 97, 98. Um, but what struck me the most in reviewing the plan was on page 34, it illustrates, um, existing marked crosswalks. And of all of those illustrated, the highest concentration of crosswalks is at that very roundabout. I mean, it's like right there in front of your house when you're looking at it. And, um, this plan, proposed plan just would allow, does not make sense for high trafficked areas like a UPS store or nail salon or, um, places like that. Um, this roundabout not only has the highest concentration of walkways, um, at least in the picture on the page that I was looking at, but is the epicenter of entering and exiting Louisville. Um, and the completion of the Great Ragin Road will not change that. Um, as a landowner, along with the felt that are here, uh, closest to the area being developed, I just want to speak to the environmental stormwater impact. Um, I didn't notice the current plans, um, or I don't know kind of how to look at all that. So like, understand it more, just want to note that and how that would impact me. And then just in closing, uh, I do think the plan is not really well thought out. Um, it's not in the best interest of those on Heritage Drive, those coming and going and out of Louisville, um, at that roundabout. Ah, my gosh, hold on. Mostly those that will be walking and using the crosswalks. Wind walkability is a huge part of the long-term goals of downtown Louisville. Um, there is development that is currently taking place that will better suit the rezoning and businesses being proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Mac, Mac Wilder, 385 Foxwoods Circle. Uh, it's very simple. It's, it's just anybody who lives, I thought, I thought there was only one person who lived on Heritage Ridge. Apparently I'm wrong. Uh, and it's a lot more complicated. I talked to Mr. Hannah about it a couple of days ago here at City Hall. And he showed me a plan where it said everything was going to be on public, on public land. And I thought that made that problem go away. My only request is that you work with the residents on Heritage Ridge and make sure all their concerns are addressed. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Whoever gets here first.
It's upside down. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm going to try not to cry. Um, my name's Cameron Kresel. I live at 464 Heritage Drive. Um, I stand here on behalf of all my neighbors that are all present or are not here, that couldn't attend to share the concerns regarding the proposed rezoning of 6724 Shallowford Road. This property is currently zoned residential and lies within the downtown core area of Louisville. While we appreciate the town's commitment to thoughtful growth, rezoning this property...
Take a, take a deep breath. You're doing You're doing great. Deep breath. You're okay. You're doing great.
Res zoning this property to commercial does not conform to the adopted Lewisville Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan 2022 or to the intent of the UDO. The comprehensive plan represents our town's long-range vision and future land use map. It identifies four key areas of downtown growth and clearly states that new retail and office development should remain within existing designated commercial districts while preserving Lewisville's small downtown residential character. As noted on page 67 of the comprehensive plan, the downtown area is meant to support unique, small-scale commercial ventures that respect our historic small-town feel, combining civic uses, limited retail, and mixed-use residential areas in ways that avoid strip development and promote thoughtful design standards. Although this has been presented, but in this area, as it is in, stated on the plan's map in Area 2 designated on page 43, this property lies within the town center residential area. Area 2 specifically supports residential and small office use, but it clearly states that parcels south, on south side of Shaliford Road, from Shaliford Square westward, are intended to remain residential or small office, or live-in dwellings, or work-in living dwellings, not for general commercial development. Larger commercial uses are intended for the north side of Shaliford Road or within, as well, Area 1 of those four areas. The UDO reinforces this direction. Section B24 dot A G42 requires that all rezoning decisions be in harmony with the comprehensive plan and consistent with its future land use designations. This proposed commercial rezoning and potential strip-style development are not, is not compatible with the, with this policy or with the surrounding character of Lewisville Downtown Core. In closing, I respectfully ask the board to, the Board and Council, to uphold the comprehensive plan and UDO by denying this rezoning request of 6424 Shaliford Road. Doing so will preserve the careful balance of our residential character, walkability, and small downtown charm that make downtown Lewisville truly special. Thank you for your time and continued dedication to protecting our character and future of our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Edwin Higgins at 1648 South Marblehead Road. I did not come here tonight for this particular issue. However, I have a couple of facts I want to put in front of your consideration. And I, Keith's comments is what made me come out. My parents owned a small pharmacy inside of Black Mountain, population of 8,500. Lewisville is 13,000, okay? Similar municipality. When they bought their pharmacy, right next door to them was a childcare center with one entrance and one exit, one egress. For us to get the property that my parents had to have because it was a retail establishment, we had to provide two additional egresses at a stoplight because we were a retail property because of traffic. That's it. There's a lot more traffic with retail than you can anticipate, a lot more accidents that came even at a stoplight, not a roundabout. And blocking also the ability to access essential services with what the DOT is recommending to Lewisville Drug and other places is not very prudent. A childcare facility was beside my parents' pharmacy. These are families down the road, kids. There's a lot more there than you think there would be. I don't care the type of business, but a retail business at a pharmacy, it's not that much foot traffic. My parents had a pharmacy. It's going to cause a lot more than you think it will. I respectfully ask that you consider those facts because it did save lives, it did cause a lot of issues with getting the planning done for my parents to get their business where it was, but it was necessary to put in those two additional egresses because we were a retail establishment and it saved those kids' lives. And I'm asking you not to put a retail business at that corner. I'm for business in this community and growing it, but not a retail business with that high volume of traffic at that particular location. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? We'll make an exception for you, Mary. Well, yeah, actually, I think we're going to open the door, unfortunately. Have you spoken before, ma'am? Yeah, I think probably if you hold your thoughts, that would be great. Next speaker. Well, what we, what we tried to do is, is avoid duplication of speakers, you know, speakers speaking multiple times.
Oh, I don't understand. How does that happen?
Oh, well, that's, that was my question. Please come up.
No, I, I thought, I have, I think this will be very brief. I'm just wanting to share with one of our other neighbors. My husband's already spoken tonight, so this is for one of our other neighbors and I just wanted to reach, she's given me permission.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you so much for listening to our concerns.
Please state your...
Oh, thank you so much for listening to our concerns. My name is Pam Steph and I live at 474 Heritage Drive. And I am, I'd like to just read, it's very brief, um, something from one of our other neighbors who could not be here. We have neighbors on our street who have lived there for 65-plus years. When they first moved onto Heritage Drive, it, the, the road itself stopped at their basement. So since then, it's, it's, you know, a little bit longer and we have a few more houses, but she just wanted me to share their concerns because her mother's elderly and didn't feel like coming out tonight. She's in her 90s. Okay. Having been in the neighborhood 65-plus years, Heritage used to end at our basement driveway. We're used to a quiet, safe neighborhood and we'd like to remain that way. I worry that a cluster of businesses at the top of Heritage would increase road traffic, which would increase property damage, like further deterioration of the road, especially with big trucks coming in and out. And even though there might be signage saying, "Don't turn left," inevitably, people get lost on the roundabout now and they always come down to the end of our street or in Mary Ann's driveway and turn around. It's constant. And they drive really fast down our street and we have children on our street that play. And I walk my dogs and there's been a couple of times where I've had to jump out of the road with my two dogs for fear I was going to get hit because somebody was lost coming down Heritage Drive who got lost, you know, I guess they got turned around in the traffic circle. So she was concerned about, you know, the deterioration of the road, um, as well as the safety of the children because we have kids that play. Um, the Kreuzels have four kids and, um, the McNeils have two kids and they play, they play in their yards and sometimes a ball might roll across Heritage and they go after the ball. And cars come flying down the street because there's a curve. And if you're, you know, on the downside, like walking up the hill, the car doesn't see you and they come down so fast, that's when I've had to jump out of the road with my dogs. So she was concerned about just to increase traffic. And people, our streets narrow and people don't care. If they're coming flying down, they'll just ride in your yard. They don't, you know, they don't stay on the road, they don't slow down. Um, they, you know, if another car's coming, so, you know, our yards, um, you know, have suffered as a result as well, so. And just people riding through, like you said, and as she said, and just, you know, they don't really care about who lives down there because they're just in a hurry and so we just don't want that extra traffic because of a retail business, people getting turned around or lost. So thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it tonight.
Thank you.
Town Council. My name's Eva Jane Phelps. I live at 461 Heritage Drive. I've been a longtime resident of Lewisville, living on Heritage Drive for 32 years. During that time, I have seen a lot of well-thought-out changes and I'm sure that's been brought about by the Council, preserving the small-town char, charm that most of us love about Lewisville. I'm here representing not only myself, but my, my neighbors that live on Heritage Drive. And I also respectfully request denial or at least reconsideration of the current building proposal that's located at the top of Heritage Drive and, as you've heard, our very busy roundabout. It's my understanding, as we've heard from other neighbors and us trying to, uh, read the comprehensive plan and the downtown design guidelines, that this property is designated for residential, as it is now, and/or small office. And we've seen a lot of residence, residential properties become, uh, small businesses along Shaliford. It seems to, um, have, have turned out well when they are small businesses that have set , uh, business hours and limited traffic. However, the proposed building complex that, that's being proposed here appears to cede this designation with multiple businesses. The primary one will be open seven days a week with a large truck traffic on a regular basis. And in addition, we're hearing that in the future will most likely be a second horizontal building space built behind it. We're very concerned about this entrance-exit on our street. And I know, you know, there's concerns about the Shaliford, uh, entrance and exit as well, but I do think that needs to be carefully considered. Additionally, it, this property is designated as Area 2 South, calling for, um, development of small offices, which would not invite heavy traffic in and through this area, the traffic circle. And I think we're specifically concerned about the entrance and exit there on Heritage. This drive is one lane and a dead end. And it makes it hard even sometimes for us neighbors, but we're very familiar with it. We go slowly, uh, we're, we're on the lookout, but as was mentioned by Pam, when people aren't familiar with it, they're going sometimes 30, 40 miles an hour and the traffic, uh, that street will just not handle that. So I just will respectfully ask that you, um, deny this or at least carefully consider whether this proposal is best for our town and, um, for Heritage Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Anyone else to speak? Please come forward. Okay. Show and tell, I wouldn't expect anything less from you. Let's see, Sandra, we're going to need to get you to where you can be picked up.
Okay, I'm going over there.
You're going to go over there? Great.
I'm going over here, but I respectfully have some handouts, too.
And, and we all know who you are, but please, for the record...
But I will.
State your name and address.
Sandra Mock, 290 Mock Garden Lane. Former council member, former planning board chair, adjoining property owner.
Thank you.
So I do join this piece of property. Oh. There's three that they can share. This is more for your knowledge for when you get into your discussion. It does cover a lot of the things, it does cover a lot of the things that they talked about tonight. The comprehensive plan, when you look at it from front to back, it does reference this area in different ways. In one section, it does talk about that lot not being built on. It also talks about that lot being housing and waiting. It does talk about it in the downtown, but when it talks about it in the downtown, it refers over to the downtown design guidelines. The downtown design guidelines talk about the four areas, which y'all are all familiar with, Area 1, 2, 3, and 4. Area 2, which is directly across from this property, is split up in three sections. South, what is to occur between the Great Wagon Road and Shaliford, and what is to be north of the Great Wagon Road. North of the Great Wagon Road is multi-housing. Check box, we've got that. What's in between is all of the things that they're requesting. What is south is small office and residential. That's what's in that guideline book to go between Shaliford Square and this roundabout, which is what's happening on that side of the street now. Everything that's over there is one type of small business with one entrance on Shaliford Road. So in, in keeping with that, that's, that would be the same thing that would need to happen here. So I brought some guy, I brought some things to talk about, and no, I'm not going to talk about all the pages that are in there, but you will see on one of those pages, the consistency of the guidelines are the roundabouts moving forward and the existing roundabout. If you were to look at this roundabout, it does not look like any of the other roundabouts because it enters into a residential. We don't have that in any of the other roundabouts. So therefore, the split island system was never fully installed at the end of Heritage. You might be asking, what's the split island system? It is the concrete, it is the pedestrian crossing, and then the other concrete. The second concrete piece was not installed. It is indicated on the pavement with an orange marking. If you look at that design drawing, you will quickly see that for the in-and-out on Heritage, they will be cutting the sidewalk back and the out, uh, will be cutting into what would be the orange area. So in essence, what you will have, you can have traffic coming through the traffic circle, turning right onto Heritage, and then, oh, I don't see any traffic coming, let me shoot up there. And then they're cutting across what should have been an island. Very dangerous. Also, with all the other roundabouts and the new roundabouts that are coming, everything is right in, right out. There's no left turns. Where there are left turns in the town, there are a dedicated left lane, or there is a dedicated turn lane, which is what Keith was speaking to earlier, is what he has in the pharmacy. We don't have this example anywhere else. So you have all the tools now to look at. But in keeping with the, um, actual site plan itself, there's some things that are actually missing on it. And that's why I'm also here to address real quickly. Mr. McNeil talked about the access management plan. That was adopted in 2009. It has not been applied to this site plan. It is, if you were to actually approve this site plan, it's not on there. It says that you must have a 25-foot easement across the property that would join to the existing property for future development. It's not there. The pharmacy, the Hayworth Miller, and atrium all join another RS20 lot. They all have the dedicated access management plan applied. It's not there. And so in keeping with it, it would need to be added to this plan. The next thing that is not there also is the design of the building shows a parapet wall on the elevation drawings. It does not show a capped parapet wall or a hidden design feature that is spoken in the architectural standards for B2 dot 3. And I can give you a quick example of those two. The capped parapet wall is what is on the vet's office. It's not tall enough, it's not covering the electrical equipment. The other design that is spoke to is on the atrium building. You do not see any equipment on their building. So, um, those are two things that are not within the designs. And so in keeping with, and you, if you read through all of those documents, it's a very confusing lot. It has a right turn in, right turn out on Shaliford, has a right turn, left turn in that makes no sense on Heritage because it creates all these safety features. I would be in opposition to this without sending it back to the planning board. Because I also want you to notice something else that you might not see up there, but it was on the, it's on the other plan, is that the... it was on the, it on the other plan, is that the neighbor to the right that is RS20, if you look at their buffer yard on that side, it is cutting through his driveway. So it looks as if it's eating part of his driveway over there. So I would also have concern on that plan and that neighbor.
Sandra, could you wrap up here in just a couple?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, good.
I'm done. You have all the tools that you need.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please come up.
Robert Moser, 14 Williams. The Gateway Project corrected a left turn hazard at the Circle K. This project is going to create, if the secondary entrance exit on Heritage, a traffic problem for vehicles and pedestrians. I live right beside it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? I see no movement, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, if you don't mind, we've been kind of sitting here like you have for two and a half hours. If we could take a short break, we'd appreciate it. I think maybe some of the council members could use that, yes?
Sure.
And maybe some of you all could use it, too. So we're gonna take just a short break.[695.51]
Thank you. All righty. As you recall, we did conclude the public hearing just a moment ago. So now this is council's opportunity to ask questions that may have arisen during the public hearing, council members.
I've got some questions for the planner. If you could come up.
Sure, be happy to. Hello?
There was a lot of conflicting information being provided by folks who were speaking on this matter, and it creates some confusion, at least for me. And so I would like for you to respond to things that you heard that you think are factually incorrect.
Sure. I believe there's been some misinterpretation of the 2014 guidelines. Area two is shown on page forty-two or forty-three of the comprehensive plan, and it is designated residential. That is actually where the Arden Town Homes project is going to be located, on the other side of Schallford. This side of Schallford is not part of area two. And 2014 was included as the plan as a historical document that informs the plan that we have now, which is the 2022 plan. Page sixty-three of the comprehensive plan clearly identifies this as the downtown core area, the DCA, and lists that it is meant for a mix of institutional, retail, office, housing-type uses suitable for something like this. As far as the issue of the access management plan, I did have some notes on that because I had looked at it. The property, just to, well, looking at this site plan to the right of it, is zoned RS-20, and its zoning will not be changed. Because it's residential, a type-two buffer yard is required completely along the entire part of that property. The applicants are actually offering a thirty-foot buffer yard. Although shared access might be ideal for future development, current conditions complicate the matter of the idea of a twenty-five-foot dedicated easement to the property next door, including the request for alternate compliance and the components of that that Mrs. Hoak has included. I also wanted to clarify that the planning board did not request a traffic impact analysis. A TIA, a study, a traffic study, was discussed among the planning board before recommendation was made. And it was clarified that there is an appendix to the ordinance that provides guidelines for when a TIA may be appropriate. This project, we don't really have any specific triggers or thresholds for, say, okay, we've got to have a traffic study. Ultimately, our guidelines are what NC DOT would use to make the call if there needed to be a traffic study. NC DOT did not make that call in their comments on this, on this project. What was requested, what was included was the recommendation for consideration of the traffic mitigation and signage and things like that.
So, you know...
That's what I can think of off the top of my head that came up.
Okay, so we heard a lot about safety concerns, and so out of an abundance of caution, why would the planning board not order a TIA as you just described? I mean, maybe there's a rationale for that, but I just need to hear it.
Our ordinance actually doesn't allow the planning board to order or request a TIA. It provides guidelines that are taken into consideration as part of the TRC review, and it would ultimately be up to, they could refer it to DOT, but it would ultimately be up to NC DOT to make that call. And the planning board did not feel it necessary to request a TIA.
Because, you know, a lot of what I heard, at least from multiple speakers, was that the impression I was getting, and maybe this is a wrong impression, was that folks went to talk or speak at the planning board sessions, and their concerns fell on deaf ears. Is that a proper representation of what happened?
I would not make that call or feel comfortable necessarily making that call. There were fewer people at the planning board, but they were definitely there, and they definitely presented their concerns to the planning board. There was discussion amongst members of the planning board throughout the meeting in responses to some of the questions, including the idea of the TIA and other things. So I do not think that's a fair assessment, or that I would even try to make a call that it fell on deaf ears. I think the planning board was appropriately responsive in its consideration of this project.
So there's also representations that the planning documents that exist for the town were ignored by the planning board. Is that, that's the impression I got anyway.
That goes back to one of the points that, yes, I think, sir, that I just made, that I believe those, the comprehensive plan and the plans have not been read correctly.
By who?
By these folks here. And I think there's been a misinterpretation that there are areas listed on page forty-two and forty-three that there are suggestions, they're not requirements. Everything in the comprehensive plan is a guideline, a suggestion, it's not a requirement. That the area two that they're speaking of, it was meant for basically housing. This property is not actually included in the area two map. That's across, across Schallford from this site. This site, as of the 2022 comprehensive plan, is designated as the downtown core, and this is the, or the DCA versus the DGA, which is the gateway that transitions this way. I would feel confident saying that the planning board certainly gave due consideration to the plans, that they reviewed them, that they took those into consideration before making, making the vote and recommendation that they did.
Thank you.
I've got a quick question. Ms. Mock spoke about an access management plan.
That's what I was addressing with the access management plan. Basically, what that would mean was, the goal of the access management plan, especially in the downtown area, is that each parcel have some means of connection for connectivity, for vehicular connectivity. In this case, because of the nature of the property to the east, to the right side of this one, the residential nature of the other requirements of developing this parcel in this fashion basically makes that infeasible. There is, there is, the access management plan talks about connecting, I forgot exact wording, but connecting parking and access areas. There is no parking or access area on this adjacent parcel. It's a vacant residential property. Thank you.
Lynn, I have a question in regard to that. Question in regard to that. In the past, when we've had cases like this, even when there's not a commercial property next door, we've typically required at least a stub, because not knowing what could wind up going in next door, and I'm sure Susan probably remembers from her project, that was an epic connection case similar to this.
Yeah.
And incidentally, she handled it really well. But that's something that we put in because we don't know what the future would hold. And in cases where nothing would build, then nothing would ever become of it. But if something did build, then we would have a way to access that. And in some cases, we even put in conditions of the plan where, if that came to fruition, that there would be a driveway closed at that point, and then we would use the new cut, and of course, we've made people share drives. There are several businesses on Schallford where that's been done. So I think that's something...
It has been done, the research I've seen, you're exactly right.
At least going forward.
Exactly what you're talking about.
You know, that's something we need to keep in mind.
It is, and part of, again, a part of the alternative compliance request included that aspect, that because of the nature of the property next door and the uniqueness of this property, that that part of the plan wouldn't necessarily fit with this development of the site. That's the proposal.
It's the nature of the plan, or nature of the property today, not knowing what might be later.
Right.
And then Sandra raised a good point regarding the parapet.
The parapet, I reviewed the design guidelines for the downtown core, for the downtown overlay. The flat roof, the parapet roof, is allowed because of the height of the structure. It is twenty-eight feet or less. That doesn't show really well on the renderings. But at the bottom one where you're facing it to the left where the flat roof is allowed, that is less than twenty-eight feet, which means that a partial flat roof is allowed. There's another component of, this is escaping me at the moment, in the downtown overlay guidelines, but that does support and allow that portion of the roof to be flat because of the height.
But the HVAC should not be visible from the street? Because the case that was made regarding the, another property on Schallford Road...
Oh, right, that it was visible and...
Yes, that's something that we want to try to avoid, because even with Four Brothers Gas Station, we made them go back and revise that roof a couple of times to ensure that that HVAC was taken care of.
I've had conversations with Ross and Jung about this, and all of the HV equipment, HVAC equipment is Plan Four and is hidden and disguised. There is no plan to have anything like that on top of the roof where you would be able to see that.
And then lastly, at the planning board meeting, there was some discussion, clearly the biggest issue with this, if this didn't connect to Heritage Drive at all, a lot of this goes away.
Right, right.
So that's clearly a focal point for this whole situation.
Sure.
And I know that at the planning board meeting, there were, I was here that night, popped into the back and listened in a little bit, knowing that this was coming. And there was some extensive discussion, even at the dais, about ways to mitigate this on Heritage. There'd been talk about angling the access out, there'd been talk about, should Heritage be gated at the point where it becomes private? There were several things that were mentioned that I didn't hear mentioned here this evening, but...
I do remember this being mentioned at planning board.
Was there any, you know, on your part, was there any reason why those things were not brought up this evening as possible options? Were they ruled out summarily, or...
No, those were meant to be, the umbrella statement of the recommendation for considering traffic calming measures, the planning board recommendation to approve, and then the separate planning board recommendation that the town council consider traffic calming measures and signage, that those things are meant to be included in that recommendation. That was the recommendation, I believe, that came from, I believe it was Morat, who made the motion that night. That's what that was meant to be.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I need to get my water.
I think that was, that was all the questions I had at this point.
Okay.
Probably not a question for you, Lynn, but more so for the applicant.
Sure.
The number of deliveries in a particular day that is estimated to be received at that establishment, that retail establishment?
There's usually one delivery in the morning, and there's one delivery pickup in the evening around six, six-thirty. And then there may be an Amazon truck that drops off a couple of things, and there may be a FedEx truck that drops off some packages. But as far as eighteen-wheelers coming in, as far as any other types of trucks, that's just not, that's not the case.
And your stay near...
Yeah, I mean, it's, we, I actually own the store over at, on Renolda Road, at the old, well, it was Lowe's Food, it's not, it's empty now. But we might get, we might unload twenty-five to thirty-five packages in the morning, basically, just for the mailbox holders that have mailboxes there. And that's pretty much it. And then at the end of the day, they do their sweep, they pick up, and that's pretty much it. This is the brown, the twenty-foot UPS brown trucks that you see.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you know what time in the morning they typically pick up? Or they, like, here in Lewisville, do you know what, is there a set time?
They drop off probably around, I would guess, nine-thirty, ten o'clock.
In the morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's when our packages come in.
And then the evening, what time?
Around six.
Around six p.m.?
Yeah, our stores close at six-thirty, so they pick up somewhere between five-forty-five and six.
Nine-thirty, ten o'clock in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I feel safe saying that. I'm not sure exactly what it is, because it's on their schedule.
Got you, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question for you. What makes you think that the construction of this facility would not create the kinds of issues that folks were talking about in terms of safety, in terms of traffic congestion and all that sort of thing?
Well, I think if you, if you look at our present location on the Lowe's Food Shopping Center, all that traffic is driven by the Lowe's Foods, all the other businesses there. I mean, basically, there's only going to be either three or four tenants in that space, and I'm one of them. And, you know, we're looking, we're not looking to put restaurants in there, we're not looking to put any type of high volume. We're looking really maybe a lawyer's office, accountant, things like that. So it's in our judgment that's not going to have, I understand their concerns. I would probably have the same concerns if I was living on Heritage. But I just don't, I don't see it, just from my, what I know, I've been in the UPS store business for about fourteen years, and we own four, or three, we sold one in Greensboro. But it's not, it's just people coming in, and they'll drop off a package, or they'll pick up something, and then they, and they leave. So I just don't, I mean, we're not putting a Walmart supercenter in there.
Right, sure. Yeah, because somebody who spoke earlier talked about being in logistics and having, I think, said twenty trucks or something like that from FedEx. And the implication from that was, that's kind, the kind of trucks that'll be moving in and out of there on a daily, regular basis?
We have one delivery in the morning...
And you're saying that is, that's not accurate?
One delivery in the morning from our UPS driver, and one pickup at the end of the day, six o'clock. Now, if you, if you're, if you have a box holder at our store, and a relative ships a package to you by FedEx, then that FedEx driver has to stop there. So he, at the most, has maybe five or, maybe five or ten packages at the most, could just be one or two. And he drops them off, somebody signs for him, and he's gone. So it's just...
What size do you bet it's a FedEx truck?
They have the same size trucks that we have, just the twenty-foot, like UPS brown truck that you see on the road.
And then in addition to that, there's Amazon deliveries?
There are Amazon, they have the same size trucks if they come in, but they, they all deliver, you know, once in the morning, too. That's usually what they do.
So just to clarify, you've got your UPS trucks coming in, you've got Amazon trucks coming in, and then you've got FedEx trucks coming in, is that accurate?
One truck, yes. One truck a day.
One truck of your truck?
One truck of each one.
Of each one?
Yeah, FedEx doesn't make multiple deliveries, they just make...
Sure.
They're on the route, they drop off in the morning.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask you a question? I know earlier there were some discussions about foot traffic. And could you give us an estimate of what you might see on a daily basis from consumers here in Lewisville or somewhere else that might walk into your store? Just, just to guess, I know that's hard to calculate, but...
You know, it could vary. It could be ten an hour to twenty an hour. It just depends. Christmas time, it can be, you know, twice that. So it's just, it's a hard, it's hard to quantify that.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, it's, I don't, it could be, you know, I would say ten to twenty an hour at the most.
Okay.
So, and it's hard, it's hard to quantify that because UPS corporate, UPS Store corporate, they don't keep records on the, on the, like, the Amazon drop-off. It's just paying customers, that becomes a customer in our customer account.
Yes.
So it's, but, I mean, I'm, just from my, I was at Lewisville today, the Lewisville store, and, you know, it's, it's not all the time, it's just, you know, they come, they come in, or two, three people in line, and then they go, then it's nobody there, and then two or three more people come in. So it's, it's not, it's not overwhelming.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, and then I just have a general question. So from the perspective and the view of our community, what value, because I hear you mitigating kind of the foot traffic and the, and the amount of trucks that are coming in, what value will this building bring to our community?
Well, it's going to be a beautiful building, number one. I think that, you know, we're, personally, we want to go to a smaller building from our footprint at the Lowe's Food Shopping Center, we don't need something that big. You know, it's going to be a little bit more efficient, but as far as, I can't answer that question, I don't know how to answer that question.
Thank you.
I mean...
You will pay taxes, though, right? You will pay taxes.
Yeah, well, there you go, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, because on the other side of the value question is always the detriment question. And so what harm do you perceive putting your building where you want it to put it? Having, is there any harm? I mean, or is the only benefit that will occur from placing this building?
Well, from my perspective, it's a benefit. I know there's some people mentioned here about, you know, far better locations. Well, my wife and I, we've been looking for dirt or a building for three years, and there's no vacancies anywhere. And so, you know, our lease is coming up, and we just decided that we wanted to just, just go ahead and make the investment in our own building. And, I mean, three years we've been looking. We actually tried to go across the street to the Food Lion Shopping Center, and they don't have any vacancies. And so it's, this was kind of our last-ditch effort.
Got two questions, Mayor. First one's going to be for the applicants, thanks everybody for sticking around. Second question is going to be for Lynn, so Lynn, be prepared. The first question I have for you is, with your other businesses that are going to be there, are you going to be the landlord for those other businesses?
Yes.
Okay. That was, they all asked the other questions I was going to ask you, so I'm not going to do that repeat. Lynn, I do have a question for you, if you don't mind. If you'll pull back up the slide about the possible concrete median that's going to go, wrong direction. All right, perfect. Two questions for you. The first one is, that extension, and I know I'm putting you on the spot here, can you give me a percent of likelihood, roughly, of that happening?
I...
You can say, yeah, you don't know.
I couldn't give you a percent of likelihood. I have, just haven't had enough conversations to even try to, yeah.
And then, sorry, follow-up. There's going to be three total. So the second one is, if, will that occur during construction, or is DOT going to come out a year after construction and put that in? What is the typical timeframe for something like that to go into place?
Typically, let's say this is approved, and construction and design begin, that is when the property owner and the engineer and the NC DOT folks, with input from the public if needed, work out how access is going to work. That often is not, very often is not set in stone at the time of site plan approval. It usually involves work and change, and it could be that, they decide that that extension's just simply not necessary. But because of that, I think it's, the way I want to phrase it, because of the way it typically works, some of these things are currently unknowns. But that generally, if someone in the community, like Keith, would, could show, you know, trouble, DOT will take that into consideration. Does that help?
Yeah, that answers perfectly. Then the follow-up to that that I have, and then I promise I'm done. My concern, and I get there's a lot of issues with concerns about Heritage and concerns about the right in, no left out, my concern looking ten years down the road is, let's say two lots down, a business wants to build where a house has been destroyed or whatever, how like, are we expecting to possibly see that extension of that median to where all of a sudden now we have a median through Schallford Road? Are we, are we kind of starting a snowball here?
I am not qualified to answer that question.
Okay, that's fine.
I did want to follow up just a little bit on your question about value, to the...
Yeah.
I think it stumped you a little bit, but were you asking maybe perhaps about values to the community?
Correct.
Okay.
So when we do, when there's annexations that come into our community, or, you know, anything that we're looking at rezoning, that's typically one of the top things on my mind is just the value.
Right.
And then, as Dr. Schaller mentioned, kind of the other flip side of that as well, but...
Would there be anything that you would want to say to that, Jung, or about the value of the services? I'm sorry, you would just say, sounded like you were getting ready to say something, so, okay.
I do have a question, Lynn.
Sure.
Regarding sidewalks in front of it. So does the width of the sidewalk change at any point in front of, or can you tell me how, why the sidewalk is all throughout this project? So in the car, I mean, it's stopped?
It's five feet, I mean, almost, on all locations, on all property lines.
It's five feet on all locations along the front property line, it stays the same. There are also plans, because of the way the building would be situated with the alternative compliance with not being at the, exactly at the build-to line, to incorporate it, to incorporate pedestrian amenities that we've discussed, what are those things called, with the slats that you, pergolas, something like a pergola, a sitting table, an interactive sort of public-private transition, because of that, the way that the building would be have to set back from, from Schallford, and because of the pedestrian traffic there.
So Lynn, has DOT been involved in any way in looking at this project from the point of view of potential hazard because of changes in traffic patterns and that sort of thing, that they would tend to recommend against it?
There was definitely not a recommendation against it in any notes. In our typical process of site plan review like this, once it's submitted, I send it out to, by email, to the members of our technical review committee, who include NC DOT and multiple other parties. They then individually will send me comments or sets of comments that I then compile into a report for the planning board and for the council. In this case, David Bankhead, who is the new... In this case, David Bankhead, who is the new manager for this project, who replaced Scott, basically made three, three points. The DOT does not have a single published standard for new driveway connections. We do require a minimum site distance of one hundred feet from traditional intersections. With that said, a site-specific assessment and the approval will ultimately be determined by the district engineer, which goes to the point of sort of the open-endedness of some of these, some of these things. The design layout, final design and layout will need to illustrate adequate safe distance between driveway connection and roundabout intersection and pedestrian crosses to be considered or accepted, and that's part of the DOT standards for pedestrian crosses, crossings, disability access and those things. And then, in future, please provide more information about proposed site details, which would come with the actual process of, of working out how NC DOT would work. Those were the comments that were received. And that is typical unless there's something larger happening with the project that would include more attention from DOT.
So they're pretty much duty-bound to ensure safety.
They are.
Related to whatever thing they're involved with.
They are.
Is that right?
This is a state-maintained road.
And there have been no red flags at this point that DOT has raised?
Exactly, there has not been any.
Mayor Protim asked a question about value to the community, and I want to approach it from a little bit different angle. Aren't you bringing value to the community now where you are? I mean, I don't know how many people in this area use your UPS store, but don't people in this area use your UPS store?
Sure, they use it now.
And you've been here how long?
I've owned the store since 2014.
Okay, so for eleven years thereabouts, you've been at Lowe's, and you've been operating, and people from the Lewisville community have been routinely using your services? Is that what I'm hearing you say? I mean, because my impression of business is, you wouldn't have a business unless it was profitable. And it becomes profitable based on utilization by whoever needs the services that you're providing. Therefore, there's value. So I'm, you know, I'm just wondering, and your lease is expiring, and, and, you know, I don't know about your ability to extend your lease options, or I don't know any of that, it's none of my business. But, you know, clearly, your intent is to remain in this community and to provide the service and the value you've been providing. I guess the issues are around really whether there are safety concerns that can be mitigated in some way in the way your property is being, you know, with the design and all that sort of thing. Because that's, you know, none of us want, first off, DOT has, is duty-bound to make sure that you don't create a hazard, a situation where people are at risk. But in addition to there, that, if there's anything else that could be done that could mitigate against potential risk, then that would be something that you would be interested in doing? That's a question.
I'm sure. I mean, if there is something that can be done, I just, I don't know what the, I know that the, at the planning meeting, the issues were raised, and I, and I think one of the gentlemen on the planning committee said that they were just there just to judge the merits of the project. And that the safety concerns would be brought up at the, at the town council meeting, or the approval for the zoning request. I believe that they also mentioned that there are several things that the town could do as far as, you know, as far as directing the better traffic flow out from the Heritage roadside. That that was something that I think Lynn mentioned too, that that's something that the, the town, the highway department, the town engineer.
That was a discussion that I had had with John Hannah, our Public Works Director. And what you and I and John had had discussions about your willingness to do, you know, anything the town, to work with the town if the town suggested something as far as a safety measure for that. The discussion was then with John about, and I spoke briefly with the mayor about it too, about, but just ideas. Normally, if a planning board made recommendation to the town council to consider a certain thing, I would, I wouldn't go any further. But because of the nature of this request and because of the requests from some other leaders in the town, I, just for guidance, provided this information about, about signage, about if, if something like a speed cushion or a speed bump would be safe and feasible there, maybe. That may be something the applicant would be able to discuss with our Public Works Director and I, and perhaps bring in a consulting party to say, that would be feasible here, it wouldn't be feasible here. John's gut feeling is that the, the distance there, which is just under a hundred feet, ninety-six or ninety-seven feet of town public right-of-way, and the way that the turn comes in from the roundabout, and the fact that people would be turning would make cushioning or a bump not really feasible. But that's just based on discussions that, that I've had with, with John Hannah. That answer, a bit?
Yeah, thank you.
Lynn, if you'll, yeah, Lynn, if you'll hang in there for a second.
Okay.
Currently, as the property is zoned, what can be built there?
Currently, as it's zoned, it's zoned RS20, that is residential, single-family, with a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. If someone wanted to, you've got 2.3 acres, if someone wanted to subdivide the parcel into two or three parcels, you could build two or three single-family residential structures there. Which I will just add, just follow up, that I believe is exactly against the goals of the downtown core area for something like that.
Have we, have we done any other rezonings? Apologize for my failing memory. Have we done any other rezonings from RS9 or whatever this is?
RS20.
RS20 to more business in the downtown area?
Almost certainly. Just in the short time that I've been here and the files that I've looked through. No, no, many properties have been rezoned from the files that I've reviewed, from residential to some sort of either LD1C or limited business or highway business or pedestrian business. There have been multiple examples of residential being flipped to a different zoning status like that.
So Al, this question is for you, please. And I'm certainly not indicating that the petitioner would do this, but if we recall, the town has been threatened lawsuits in the past which cost us a substantial amount of money. If we did not follow through with this rezoning, which from what Lynn is saying is allowed in the downtown overlay and in our comprehensive plan, am I correct on both those statements?
I believe it's correct to say that the comprehensive plan in multiple ways directly supports this rezoning, and the reasonableness of it is evidenced by the multiple zonings in and around. Yeah, you're correct.
If we choose not to approve the rezoning, do we potentially incur liability because we have precedent in the past of rezoning RS20 for commercial use?
So if there was a, if there was a denied applicant who sought to appeal, if you will, or to go through litigation, certainly, they are able to maintain a suit. It's hard to say if they prevail, but absolutely, there's a possibility, and of their causes of action, the basis that you're trying to articulate would be likely one of their causes of action, based on, based on precedent practice. And the argument would be that there was some sort of improper denial where there was discretion, so it was abusive discretion of some sort. So, to answer your question of legal liability, legal liability to me is in two forms or two, two hits. One is, you're suing a lawsuit and you lose and you owe damages. That's the, mostly the supreme and the highest cost. But if you are sued and you defend that suit, you incur expenses. Sometimes those expenses are high. And you will incur those, the mere fact that a suit is filed against you because you have to be represented. And often suits lead to settlements. Of course, settlements are costs that are incurred. So any litigation, whether it succeeds or fails, you will get the fees of defending. If the suit appears to have merit, you get into the realm of the likelihood of settlement. So that's, you have the cost of filing and defending always, then you have the settlement potential. If there is no settlement, but there is a trial, if you will, to judgment, you risk the lost judgment. But you still incur more fees even if you prevail. So winning a lawsuit is expensive, losing a lawsuit is breathtaking. So, yes, you have legal liability if that situation exists, it is the reason why somebody would pursue a suit. Doesn't mean you, you can't predict a guarantee of a suit, of course, and you didn't ask that, but I'll just, for the audience's sake, I will say that. But yes, that would be a more than, more than slight reason or rationale to use to bring a suit.
Okay, so, so I guess, I think what I just heard you say is that because we have done this in the past with similarly zoned properties and similar rezonings, that that potentially would provide foundation to bring a suit?
Yeah, there is exposure. And, and the planning board has determined that the request is compliant with conditions established in the UDO, is that right?
That's correct. The planning board has determined that the requirements of the downtown overlay and the LD1C zoning district have been met and demonstrated as far as can be at this point in time. Mayor, I was going to just follow up, you asked about consistency and reasonableness, and I prepare suggested consistency statements in the motion statements like we just had. And the ones I prepared for this one, this application is found to be consistent with the Lewisville Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan because retail, service and institutional uses are considered part of the fabric of downtown Lewisville. This comes straight from the comprehensive plan. Development of currently vacant lots in the downtown core area is strongly encouraged by the comprehensive plan. Land Use Objective 2 prioritizes developing downtown Lewisville as the center of community identity, encouraging small businesses and a mix of housing types. Discussions I've had with the applicants for the remaining development have included the possibility of small multifamily townhome type things. Considering reasonableness, measuring 2.333 acres, the size of the property is typical of the area. Rezoning from RS20 to LD1C will allow uses that are actually more compatible with the mixed nature of uses that are already in the area, while maintaining the character of adjacent and nearby properties and preserving Lewisville's small-town feel. And the proposed establishment provides valuable service to the residents of Lewisville and others of the county. Those are always part of what I prepare for when you might like to make the motion to approve or deny as your basis for.
If you were to, is it safe to say that the planning board and through the technical review that included the Department of Transportation, who I guess has the primary responsibility to determine the safety of a petition? Since they have said they don't perceive that there is a safety issue here, and I'm not saying there is or isn't, but I'm, I'm viewing down the road if we go to court. The, the fallback is that, oh, you know, we'd agree, we agreed with the residents that it wasn't safe. The reality is, the people who would make that determination is not the council, and it's not the residents, it's the DOT.
It is.
And so they have, they have stayed the position that there is not a safety issue in their minds, okay?
That's correct.
I don't, I don't agree or disagree with that, I see some issues.
Right, I don't agree or disagree.
But I'm looking, I'm looking at, we're standing in front of a judge.
Right.
And what are, what are the, what are the factors that are going to work against this? Number one, there's precedent for doing this. Number two, the property is, the appropriateness of the rezoning is supported by our comprehensive plan as well as our downtown plan. Number three, I had number three in my mind just a moment ago.
Right.
But it's, it's, at nine fifteen, it slipped away. But I guess where I'm coming from, and Al, I'm coming back to you, oh, I'm sorry, planning board approval. Okay, so I'm coming back to you, we now have at least three causes that we'd, we would have to defend against.
So, because of the potentials of litigation, you have identified the various rationales, the causes of actions that would be brought. Of course, we don't know how they would turn out, but yes, your exposure is more because of the things that you've mentioned than it would otherwise. It's a legislative decision, so you have that ability, and you have individual legislative immunity, of course, as individuals. But as a corporation, the town, yeah, you have exposure, and those very things you mentioned, don't know how a judge would rule, but those things you mentioned would work against you in a, in a, in a suit, in a lawsuit.
And what we've learned in the past, that whether there's merit or not, we can be sued, we can face threat of a suit. But we also can be, as some of the folks in this room will attest, we can be threatened for individual suits as well. It doesn't mean that we would prevail in court, but my, my, in our mediations, both our mediator and our attorneys, our appointed attorney by the league and our town attorney said, in essence, if you go before a jury, you will probably lose. And so that's, again, folks, I'm not debating the safety of this, I'm not debating any of that other stuff. What I'm looking at is what is the exposure to the town based on what decision we made?
So Mayor, to that point, can we, if the safety is a concern, if the safety is now left into the hands of this potential engineer at some point, that would be sign and off on it, that's, that's unknown, this engineer, could we not make some adjustments to the site plan? And, and say, you know, they're asking us for several alternative compliances, how many alternative compliances are they asking us for?
Uh, two or three components.
Yeah, this is.
The primary one is the build to line.
So we can, we can act appropriately as a, as a legislative body, yes.
You certainly can, as long as they're within the.
But we would have to approve the zoning first, or could we? I mean, this is a question for Al, but could we, we would have to approve the zoning first before we could go back and say, hey, we want there to be a stopgap, we want that one side to be taken out so that there's not entrances on, on two different ways, or that secondary entrance?
So, so I think you're doing alternate, so.
Go ahead.
Because she's your manager, I'm going to let her, before, she's itching to. So go ahead.
Since this is a conditional district rezoning, part of the approval, it's all one approval. You're approving the rezoning and the site plan and any recommendations, conditions that you place on that site plan. It's kind of buttoned up in, in one action, if you will, because it is considered conditional district. So you're granting them that district based on those conditions and everything, and the conditions placed on the property through the site plan. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you, that was great clarification.
May I ask a follow up real quick? Or to.
I'm finished.
Oh.
No, you.
Sorry, I thought, go ahead.
You're good.
I think I see where the comment is going, for removing that secondary entrance on Heritage. My concern is that at that point, we have automatically secured that the Shalford Road entrance will be inundated to a point where DOT is going to put in that median, that now we're not only impacting one business, we're now impacting five or six, and we're impacting traffic flow, which has been the talk of this council for at least the last under two years. I'm concerned that it's going to add an undue burden to that other entrance.
Lynn, do you have a comment? Do you have a comment regarding his concern, or his comment?
I would agree that that's logical. That if we were to, if the council were to approve this with only the entrance on Shalford, that they might increase the, the likelihood of more complicated requirements from NC DOT, since there were. since there, and perhaps the Fire Marshal's Office, since there won't be that secondary access coming in on Heritage.
But back to earlier when I was talking about consistency at the very beginning, we, we do not have another property currently on Shaliford that has, that abuts to, one, we don't have the situation where that goes right up to a roundabout. But we don't have one that goes in and out on two different entrances. I mean, we don't have a secondary entrance.
We do, actually. The dentist's office, and I believe there's a bank.
Okay, thank you.
There's a, one of the banks has one, has.
Don't think the bank does.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to say too, my, my experience on these of the advice I've been given over the years is, particularly on matters of safety, and we dealt with this when we had to address the distances that we allow shooting firearms within the town. If you consult an expert and you're going to recommend against that expert in the event that there is an issue, you would have to defend, where do you feel that your opinion was superior to the expert that you were deferring to? So in the case of the guns, when we asked the Sheriff's Department about their recommendations on these kinds of things, had we not adhered to that, then that would be the position we're in. I think the same, I feel the same with this. I completely understand what the folks here, and honestly, I, you know, if I lived on that road, I would not want access on Heritage Drive, I don't think. But given the fact that this is, DOT's professionally has to be consulted on this, and if they've weighed in on that, then, you know, that's another consideration altogether. But that's just kind of in, you know, my experience with these kinds of things when you're talking about areas where you bring in professionals to weigh in.
I'd like to ask Al if you would, Al. I'm having a hard time, you know, deciphering what can be allowed and the responsibility to the DOT with my own personal concern of the safety, especially observing the road and thinking, it's obvious, that's gonna be a real safety thing. But I don't feel protected, and I think, why does the council even have a say if we're not really able to say no to something the planning board has said yes to?
So, I hear your concern, and it's more toward the perils of sitting sort of where you sit now with all the considerations. You are free independently to exercise your judgment based on whatever reasons that you feel meritorious. And if you, if those concerns about safety are such in your mind, you're absolutely free. Now, what, what you're not asking and what others aren't asking, but I feel everybody senses this, I need guarantees, Andrews. I need guarantees that I'm protected, that the town is protected, that our exposure is eliminated or limited. Those guarantees can't be given because litigation in America is such that anybody can sue at any time. And your perils are not just litigation, that's your public duty, but also the way voters vote. That's not my area, but that's just a practical reality, we understand that. So you're, you're left to make a dual decision. One, now your highest decision is the exposure of the town of Lewisville as a fiduciary. What exposures does it face and how do I protect those? That's your highest duty, not yourself, not you set yourself individually, the sanctity of your seat. Now, under that initial goal, yes, the town of Lewisville has exposure if you say no, as has been talked about. Doesn't mean that it loses, but there is exposure. Now, it's hard to say what's greater because your duty is also to the citizens of the entire town. But if your basis is on safety, and I think what one of the council members was talking about, you're not a safety expert, it's what you feel individually. So you absolutely can use that as part of your individual vote, that's fine. When you have to defend your vote from, say, the witness stand, how would you articulate a defense? And what I feel is not the highest level of defense. Because it's tackleable, but based on what? Well, my hunches and my, you know, you're stuck a little bit. If you're saying, my, my reason was based on safety, and you cannot articulate it. So if, if safety is one of your reasons, I would, I would encourage you to be able to articulate what you mean by that. And there are reasons here that you could, absolutely. I wish I could give you a guarantee of protection that says, if you vote this way, you're absolutely protected. If you vote another way, you're absolutely exposed. And I can't, I wouldn't do that. But I will provide to you that, you know, consider what your, what your position is designed for. You look at the exposure of the city and somehow mix in the safety as a piece for residents, but also what your goals are as a community and how this fits into the community's goals. And you somehow have to boil all that down into a decision one way or another. And a lot of decisions you make are close. But for the legal liability side, that narrow lane that you've asked me, yes, there is exposure. And when there is exposure, it's like, it's like coronavirus. We all had exposure, but not all of us got it. Some of us got it and overcame it, some of us got it and still have it. And that's the same with litigation. So yes, a denial exposes you to litigation. I can't tell you that exposes you to a loss. But any litigation has a financial liability to it, it's just the nature of it, how it goes. So that is absolutely present. I don't know if that answered it.
It does. I feel like my hands are tied, you know, because to me too, it can be a moral decision. And how do you define that?
No. Would this be in a package deal where we're doing the zoning and the site plan and everything's in one? The struggle I'm having is not so much the zoning as it is the site plan. I just don't think it's a appropriate site plan for that, for that parcel. So I would need to define reasons and make sure I can defend myself in a court of law if I deny the rezoning based off of the site plan.
So when? Okay, in, in an ideal world, whatever decision you make, you wanna be able to articulate a defense of it, you know? And you've, you, you've split that question down in a certain way. And I almost hear that, like, what is the percentage of my exposure based on this and that? That's hard to do. But if you have articulable reasons for denial, you can deny. You absolutely can, and, and you're free to do that. I mean, because either way you go, there's some exposure, you know? So, I mean, citizens could somehow, you know, get together and mount a challenge as well. But and if you wanted to sort of pause and reflect or, you know, you could do that too. You can continue the hearing, it's a public hearing, you can continue it if you wanted to. And sort of gain more information if that was valuable. I would ask it to be gained through a public hearing and not other ways, but yeah, so it's a matter of record. But I guess I can't offer you a guarantee of your safety and security one way or another. But you are individually able to make a principled decision based on whatever reasons you want, you can do that. And it won't get down to if you voted in favor of it, you have more exposure than if you voted against it. I know that in lawsuits, people name people individually, and that's an artifice. It doesn't give you, that doesn't, because you're sued individually, does not expose you to liability because of that fact, because there's a defense to that, you have legislative immunity. But I know that, I know that that answer doesn't give you an absolute guarantee, but it's a tough part about being in each of our positions.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Because of what we've been through in recent past, would this be a jury trial?
So we'd be the defendant.
Apparently that makes, does make a difference, you know?
Yeah, so the defense is the one who asked for the, you know, the plaintiff says they want a certain type of trial, and they most definitely want a jury trial. We'll say, well, we want a judge alone, and you know, you have to fight, you have a hearing and you fight about that. So I can't tell you guaranteed. The plaintiffs are always gonna want a jury trial because the judge is gonna be reading the law, and it's antiseptic and it's sterile and it's not. But a jury is subject to emotion, so everybody wants a jury trial.
Maybe the better explanation here is, Lynn, that there are certain things that are done by the technical review committee on any site plan. And there are certain things that are not. What color the building could, should be, you know, whether there should be an awning there, how many stories it is, all of that. But what, what drives the things that are reviewed by the technical review committee? Things like fire doors, things like stormwater runoff, things like traffic safety. What, what drives those things to TRC and doesn't make them exclusively a planning board function, much like the height of the building or the color or the awnings?
Right, that's, I think what you're talking about is sort of that balance between who is the TRC? It's, it's fire officials, it's NCD officials, it's addressing, it's erosion and sedimentation control, stormwater folks. They don't address the specific issues that the planning staff and the planning board address as far as the downtown overlay requirements, the architectural standards. You're right, they're.
Why is that? Why, why, why is it that certain items are deemed to be appropriate to go before a technical review committee? And other items are viewed as those that a civilian planning board could do? You know, the appointed members of a planning board could render an opinion on?
I think that specifically has to do with the fact that the planning board and staff are the ones who interpret and administer the UDO. And the folks on the TRC are not responsible for administering the UDO. They're responsible for evaluating the factors related to structures that might, might come into town.
So they have standards that tend to be objective standards that they require or that in, in their professional opinion are necessary in order for those things to be considered acceptable decisions?
Typically, within their discipline. They may require certain things, they may not require certain things. But yes, it's, they're, they're the experts within their specific discipline. And then the planning staff, planning board, town council are the ones who interpret and administer and legislate the, the components of the, of the UDO.
So their, their role is viewed as one in which expertise is considered important in, in making those decisions?
Right.
Okay.
One final thing from me. I think during one of the presentations earlier this evening, I thought or heard someone say they own some part of Heritage. Did I hear that? Is, is that a private road that's public access or what is it?
It's an easement. People, I'll explain a little bit of that. Definitely, that person owns the land that the easement runs across. But no one technically owns the easement. The easement is for access for everyone that lives on the road. But the easement is simply a 25-foot-wide stripe of land that sits on, of area that sits on top of the land. So certainly, people own the land that sit under the easement.
Right, so the easement was granted by somebody some time ago or something?
Backs, I don't, I don't know the whole story on that one, but some time ago, it would have been dedicated as a private road.
So they would, so the, so the folks who are asking for this grant, for this zoning change to be granted would have access? Is that, I mean, these, these access points that are being discussed are accessed?
They, there is public right-of-way for the first 96 to 97 feet of Heritage Drive. Then the rest is private. They would not necessarily have access to the private portion, but only the, the public town right-of-way portion.
So just, so I think what's being described is there's a portion that road is publicly maintained. There's public right-of-way beyond this alleged potential driveway. And then the road is going across private property with a public, essentially, an easement. So they all can get where, you know, if you buy the house down the street, you're landlocked unless you have an easement to get in and out. Now, it's not a, from what I understand, it's not a public road, so when the asphalt's gotta be changed, which surely from looking at, it's gotta happen. You know, that's gonna be in a, you know, there's either HOA or assessment or something's gonna happen. But that public right-of-way part, you know, DOT has some jurisdiction over that. Well, there's people shaking their heads, so maybe.
They can legally do what they're asking, that's all I'm trying to get to.
It's a town, that is it. But one just point of clarification, that portion of Heritage Road that is public right-of-way is not state-maintained, it's town-maintained. So that is a difference. It is on the Powellville map.
It's town-maintained?
It was acquired in 2011 when the town built that roundabout.
Oh, I see, oh, when we bought that, when he said in the domain he lost.
That, that small portion that, that Heritage off the roundabout was acquired when that roundabout was built and the right-of-way was acquired at that point.
Okay.
I can't speak to whether it's town-maintained or state-maintained because I don't have the Powellville map in front of me. It is state, okay.
I've got it backwards. It is state-maintained on Powellville.
That small portion is public right-of-way.
Right.
Neither here nor there.
Right.
Is where this access would come off of, not off of the private easement portion.
So they, they have a legal right, they could legally do it. And they don't have to fight an HOA or something.
And it's, I'm sorry, but I did misspeak, it's both are DOT, Shaliford and that right-of-way are stated.
So Lynn, is the location of the building as is proposed on the site plan, is it kind of driven by the need to preserve the rest of the lot for future development?
Only in small part because of the access. Let me back up to the site plan. The building is situated here for multiple reasons. The primary reason is if you imagine yourself standing in front of the structure and you've got one straight property line that goes this way on Shaliford, but then you've got a corner jog, a corner jog, another corner jog. Because of that, the structure and the build-two-line requirements, the structure would not be able to be placed on the build-two-line as typically required by the standards. That's the primary reason that the building is located where it is now. That and the fact that, and this is just something that's been mentioned in discussions with the applicant, that Mr. Houston is aware that this is sort of a second gateway. When you come into town, you, you come around this traffic circle and there, here's this property. And they've expressed a desire to make that, you know, attractive.
Can we, can we approve this? I, I get it that we don't want a shopping center on that site.
And I don't believe that's what.
And a shopping center can be like a throughway, which is a long strip. A shopping center can be individual buildings on the same location. Can we approve this but reserve future development on that that would need to go back through?
Oh, it would, it would already have to, according to the rules.
Okay, so in other words, it's not a foregone conclusion that additional development will occur on that site?
It's not. If it did, it is a foregone conclusion that it has to go back through the whole process.
Okay. Is there a reason why we can't look at the, the road that is entrance, that the entrance is on Heritage Drive and ask for a repositioning of that road? So it's not a right angle on the Heritage, but rather it's more, you come out on that road, you have to work really, really hard to turn left?
I believe that's early within the purview of council.
So we're talking about changing the curve of the road so that absolutely encourages people to go in, but coming out discourages the left turn?
Yeah, I see what you mean.
And then we could also place some conditions on it that said signage. We can't put signage on private property, but we could put signage on the roadway that we own.
Right. Those are reasonable conditions within the scope of.
It's a two-way entrance, so you're still gonna have people that are coming in and taking a left over there on that secondary. Because it, it, am I, am I correct on that, that that secondary entrance has in and an out?
Secondary Neil on Heritage?
Yes.
Yes.
It has in and out, but if, if the angle of the road, and right now.
How are they gonna turn left?
Well, they're not gonna turn left on the Heritage Drive.
They're gonna turn, they're gonna go down Heritage Drive and you're, they're gonna, they can take a left in.
They can take a left in?
Mm-hmm.
But if the angle of the road is such that it's not perpendicular, is that the method?
Right.
Yeah, perpendicular.
Yep.
It's not perpendicular to Heritage, it's on an angle. It's much less likely that somebody's gonna wanna come out and instead of making a 90-degree turn, they almost have to make a 180-degree turn. It's a deterrent for people to take a left. Does that make sense?
No, but I'll, I'll work through it, yeah.
Councilwoman's meriting.
Yes, maybe that is my bedtime too, so I may have something to do with it.
Yeah.
Buckle up, we got a long way to go tonight.
But that is, that is within the scope of conditioning that you could apply.
Can we, can we? Second, can we, can we, on the, the, the entrance exit on Shaliford Road, can we, right now, that could be a left-in? It could also be, as long as the turn lane is there, it could also be a right-in. I was, turn left-in from Shaliford Road, from, if you're heading south, but it's also a right-in if you're coming the other direction from the traffic circle.
As things are structured now, it, it, it could be built that way.
Okay. Is there a way to request a wider entrance there? More than just the narrow, ordinary driveway requirements?
I would partially defer to Al, but I believe that if, I can't see the dimensions, it's too small, if you were to say, "We would like a wider driveway here," that's reasonable condition.
Well, I mean, um, where I'm getting at is can we make the, can we make the access on Shaliford Road more appealing than the access from Heritage? And by doing that, you make the driveway easier to access on Shaliford.
I see what you mean, I see what you mean.
Mayor, I would, I would almost caution, the driveway on Shaliford will, will, as the way that I understand it, is yet to be determined by NCDOT-
It is.
Whether or not they're going to require that island, or whether or not they're going to require right-in, right-out only-
Right.
Through their commercial driveway permit. So I don't, I mean, that, you know, possibly making it wider, but then in the end, NCDOT could still come back and say, "Well, this is going to be your requirement, because you're making that cut on, on the state road."
So you're saying that that may enhance the, whether the island goes in or not is, we don't have anything to say about that. That's strictly a DOT decision.
Yeah, that's DOT decision.
And we can say, "We really don't want a right-of-way there," or "We really don't want an island there."
We could-
But if they make the determination that one needs to go there, then one's going to go there. Okay, well, I can answer that question. Somebody mentioned that the school bus stops in the traffic circle to pick up kids?
I have seen, this is just my personal experience, at the, I'm pointing at the site plan that's behind you, but at the part of the curvature of the lot, right as the circle begins to taper back to Shaliford instead of Wilson, I have seen kids there waiting for, for a bus stop.
Does, does the bus stop in the traffic circle?
No, I, I don't believe they, they can. They are required to stop. Have you seen them? Okay, okay, never mind.
Parents know.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, well, yeah.
So that's another issue, but can, and we have good relationships, obviously, with the schools, can we not say, "You're not going to stop the bus in the traffic circle, you've got to move down Shaliford Road," and create the bus stop there, rather than at the intersection with the traffic circle?
I believe that's reasonable, but-
Certainly, you can officially-
Well, yeah.
Commissioner Mayor, I think the school system is the only people that can actually do the bus stop.
But we could, we can request that of them, and, and, I mean, we've done a lot, we've done a lot to support the schools, so I would think that that's, that's a reasonable request that we can make. Okay. Counsel, we've, we've talked a lot about this. Do we want to require any kind of conditions on the site plan, over and above what the planning board has proposed?
Yeah, I mean-
Are you wanting to poll us?
Yeah.
Pardon? Are we polling, or what? No, just, just jump in and talk about it, and then we'll, we'll discuss, and if the council agrees that those are reasonable conditions, then they'll be reasonable conditions.
I want to cap the entrance to Heritage. I want to cap the secondary entrance. I know that-
I'm going to disagree.
I mean-
I think it's going to make Shaliford a nightmare.
I mean, I don't, I don't know all the specifics. What I do know is that there's a lot of, NCDOT is going to come back, and, and it's going to be really their decision on the safety of, of everything. And that's fine, that's what they do professionally, as everyone's mentioned, but, I mean, I'm not in favor of it, period. So I don't know if I'm going to have, have any conditions that will be reasonable for me.
So let me ask the rest of the council, is it consensus that, and we may have to vote on it, is there any consensus that we want to cap the Heritage Road entrance?
My suggestion would be continue this and discuss it. That's, that's, that's-
We, we've about discussed it today.
Well, I understand, but I'm, I'm just saying, I think, I think we need to look at it and try to figure out an option for the people on Heritage Drive, but we also need to figure out an option that's safe for Shaliford Road. I have concerns for current business owners, I mean, I'm, I'm-
I guess, Moni, I appreciate what you're saying.
Sure.
But when we remand something back to the planning board, it has to be with specific instructions.
Correct.
And I'm, I'm trying to understand what those-
And I think, I think my point here is that we need to look at ways of doing traffic mitigation for Heritage, if that, if that in-and-out option is there.
We can make those decisions ourselves, right to them.
Okay.
They don't have to go back to the planning board.
Okay.
If we feel there needs to be some additional traffic mediation there, we can make those decisions.
All right.
And make, make this, make our approval condition on those, on those decisions we made.
All right.
I like what you were talking about with maybe approaching an angle on-
I like what you were talking about, and maybe approaching a way to discourage people from coming in on Heritage, angling that drive. That was something I think planning board talked about at their meeting as well, that might be something that would be more, more palatable, and still be safe, but still get us closer to where we can negate some of that traffic. I also don't know that it would be a bad idea, and I, I don't know this with us, but if, if the private side of this was gated, then no one goes down that road unless they live there.
Well, it's a, it's a private road, so the residents would have to agree to have it gated.
Yeah, but I, I'm saying that would be something else, so I-
And they would do that themselves.
Yeah, I don't know that I would, I would close it, but I like your idea, I like that idea, I don't know that I would, I think I, I don't know that I would want it just closed, period, because I think, you know, good point's been made, that I don't know what that does to Shaliford, and I don't know if they're going to put that center island in.
The bank, the bank currently does not have, the Wells Fargo does not have two entrances. There's not an entrance going across from Lewisville Baptist, hitting Lewisville, hitting-
They have an exit on this.
There is, there is an exit.
There's an entrance on the backside?
Yes.
Near the-
Yep.
Yes, there is.
Swing the gas station.
Okay, I don't ever, I, thank you.
Um-
Thank you.
It's just one way.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, I was just going to say, that's, that's a one-way.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken.
Correct, right.
So let me roll back again. Council members, is there any appetite to have a motion and a vote, or we can do it? Mayor Protam, if you want to go ahead and make the motion that we close the Heritage Road exit, and see if you get a second, and see if you get a vote to support that?
Mayor, I don't think I'm going to get much of a support on that, so if anyone else has any other suggestions.
I would like to suggest that we consider the redesign of the road on the Heritage, so that it, it's no longer a perpendicular entrance. It's much more of an entrance where it would be very difficult for somebody to say, "Oh, I'm going to make this 180-degree turn to go back on Heritage." Is there any objections to that?
How do we fixuate that?
We change it on the site plan.
Okay, and who pays for that?
The petitioner would pay for that.
Okay, good.
They'd have, they'd have to redraw that particular entrance, and whatever, however that's affected the site plan.
That's fine, I'm, I'm not good with that.
And again, that would be a condition, but it's still up to the petitioner, whether to accept that or not.
Sure, right, sure.
I mean, petitioner could certainly say to us, "We're not going to do that."
Right.
And you say, "Well, that's the condition of the result."
Right, right.
Okay, everybody go with that? Are there any other conditions that we want to consider here?
So I just want to make sure, John, you understand what he's talking about doing, or, or Stacy, you understand what he's talking about doing? I just want to be clear about that, that it is workable, because I don't have that conceptually, I don't see it yet. So I just need to make sure that you see that what he would do, what the mayor's suggesting would accomplish what he's trying to accomplish.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I mention something?
Mayor, I also wouldn't mind seeing an easement to that property next door, not that anything be constructed, but at least that there would be an easement there, so that if that property next door did change hands, that there would be an opportunity to join these two properties, and possibly help entirely mitigate Heritage Drive at some point.
Lynn, have we ever, have we ever approved a rezoning downtown where we didn't approve a stub street to join parking?
I honestly don't know that off the top of my head.
Because we did it with the dentist's office-
Right.
We did it with the vet office-
Funeral home.
We did it with the drugstore.
Funeral home.
I believe that the applicants would be, we have discussed this, I believe the applicants would be amenable to that, if we did require the easement and a stub from-
So there's precedent, precedent for us, we're not, we're not groundbreaking here with what we're proposing to do.
Right, not at all.
Or anything that we wouldn't ordinarily do for another petition.
Right, it could still be developed, just as it's shown on the site plan here, but with that dedicated easement, which is again, just an area in space that can be used in the future to access the next property. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry, Mayor, I think this is it. Can you explain to me what Mayor's explain, or what his, what his idea is with this driveway?
Where now it comes out and makes a perpendicular cut here? What we're proposing, or what I'm proposing, is that it goes like this, so that when somebody comes out here, they have to try really, really hard to go back on that.
So what about the people that are coming in here? They're just going to get right in here like this? It's not going to affect-
Yeah, just like they do on the, just like they do on the extension right in front of the middle, L.B., there's, there's that, there's that angle of the road there that discourages traffic.
Thank you.
Come back around. And then last-
He'll be on the planning board in a couple of years?
Moni?
Lastly, too, we, we could condition, because we've done it before, can back again to the stub connection, if at some point the property next door developed, and that stub was connected, and the property next door had an access point, sort of like we make Atrium and the building next to them share that drive. We've, we've done it in the past, we've required then that Heritage could be closed at that point, if it was so determined at that time that the stub access created a secondary way in and out that would preclude the need. And that's not that it would be done, but it leaves the door open, so that if that day arrives and it's determined we could do it.
Okay, counsel, we-
There's no harm to that.
We've spent, we've spent a great deal of time on this. Lynn, do we have to modify your motion to incorporate the conditions that we've discussed?
It actually-
Please, yeah. And as may be amended by the legislature. All right, would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I move to approve this request of, I'm, feels like a typo. I move to approve this request of this request-
We'll clean up the language.
Okay, based upon the consistency and reasonable determination statements that are included in the Board agenda packet, and as may be amended as-
And those conditions are, one, we change the angle of the connecting road to Heritage, we provide a stub street to the adjacent property, and we erect the appropriate signage on the, at the border of the town-owned road and the private road.
I think those are all reasonable. One thing I would want to clarify, we're using the term stub, we're also using the term easement. I would recommend that we require, the council, this is recommendation, the council require dedication of an easement, instead of construction of an actual stub, because we don't yet know what the future holds, but that easement guarantees there's that space.
All right. Mr. Homan, will you accept that, your motion?
Yes. And don't forget the, the ability to potentially close the access to Heritage, should that stub street present-
Yeah, I'm not sure we can make that as part of this motion, because that's, that's looking in the crystal ball of the future, because that may or may not be developed.
Right.
But the easement-
That's why we don't, we don't make it mandatory, we say, if the, because this is what we've done before, we want to try to prevent curb cut, curb cut, curb cut, we put it in where if you join another business, you may have to do a shared driveway, and then that, we reserve the right to close this cut.
We reserve the right, not that we will.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
Because we may never, I mean, it may never come to fruition that that would be the case.
But we, we reserve the right to-
Correct.
In that resolution.
Yes.
So just-
You accept the amendment?
May I, before we-
Please.
We're getting a little bit complicated, because, and I know, I understand the purpose, but like, when you say easement, who's the easement being given to?
Property owner, correct?
Well-
It's basically an easement to themselves that connects, that allows access to the adjacent property, to the right next door on the right side, so the easement would lay on the ground and allow that access for future connectivity. Does that make sense?
The more, so, I understand, I understand. Because it's a motion, and I am going to burden you with a restatement, because-
Happy to.
Madam Clerk's got to try to get this, because-
And eliminate my typo.
Yeah, and, you know, it may be necessary later for the very words you speak now to become very important.
Yes, sir.
You're banging and cocking granite right now, so when you talk about a potential for an easement, you know, articulate as much, but understand, when we start going into, there was some discussion I heard about future potentialities beyond your board service, probably I'd go light there and go heavy on just what matters right at this moment, that would just be my recommendation.
So Al, how would you word that? Is it an easement, is it reserving an easement, is it a stub street? A stub, a stub, reserved for stub connection?
I don't think, yeah, I, I, I don't like the word stub street, it's undefined, it's a, it's a colloquialism.
Right.
It's, the word stub should not be included. I think the word easement has a legal meaning.
Right.
And from an easement, somebody can create something that I think meets what you're calling a stub.
Right.
Yeah.
And then easement is dedicated.
Dedicated.
You're dedicated.
Madam Clerk, do you have? I'm going to, he wants me to repeat all that?
Okay, you, you've taken this.
I'm working on it.
Okay. Do you want a second to?
All right, I'm going to go for it, if you all stop me at any point. I move to approve this request based upon the consistency and reasonable determination statements that are included in the Board agenda packet, and as may be amended, to include a dedicated easement, appropriate signage, and a realignment of the Heritage Drive entry point of the property.
Well, what about having the ability to close Heritage?
I didn't put that in there specifically.
I think Al would have it against that.
We can't.
The more you get into future potentialities, the more exposed this becomes.
Okay. I think they can do, DOT could do it anyway, at that point if they wanted to, I'm pretty sure.
So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
And Angie, I've got that written down, so I can help.
That's the official motion, correct?
Right, that motion is sufficient.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? If not, all is favorable, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have six in the affirmative, one in opposition, Mayor Protam. Okay, thank you, moving on.
That was a lively one.[1677.72]
Also, Madam Manager, will you please make a note that we want to approach the school system and get that school bus out of the circle?
Yeah.
All righty. Why don't we take just two minutes while folks are leaving?
Leave it on ours.
Like, two quick minutes. Anybody need to stretch? This is not a 10-minute break, folks. This is just two minutes while folks are leaving.
Yes, sir. We have ordinance 2025-035. This is a proposed amendment to the Capitol Project Ordinance for the construction of the roundabout at Lewisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road. This amendment is necessary to advance the project to the construction phase. The amendment will increase the budget to $2,400,000, increase it by, excuse me, Once that amendment is approved, the total budget will be $5.2 million for the project.
Any questions for the Finance Director? Not one or two in motion, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-050. No, 035, sorry.
Second.
Mr. Huffin makes the motion, Mr. Lawson makes the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Stacy?
Next is Resolution 2025-050. A resolution to award a contract to BW Infrastructure LLC for the construction of the Lewisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road Roundabout. The town followed the required bid process. We did get five bids that were received, and BW Infrastructure came in at the lowest at $3,236,178.90. Approval of the resolution authorizes the town manager to execute the contract. So we do recommend approval of Resolution 2025-050.
Any questions for the manager?
One question.
Yes, sir.
What was the next bid amount? Do you have that available?
I don't have that in front of me.
There was about $250,000 between the first one and the next one. The next one was in the $3.5 million range.
Okay, thank you.
There were three that were in the $3 million range, and four that were in the $5.
That's all very much.
Any additional questions? My pleasure, counsel.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion, Mr. Huffin makes the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Want to be sure, want to be sure I'm listening? Want to be sure I'm listening here. John, you have the speed cushion request from Shaliford Lakes.
Yes, so you're of course aware by now that we're, that we've revitalized our, our traffic mitigation policy. This would be our second neighborhood that we've done an installation in, and this is what we consider Phase One in Shaliford Lakes. Because it addresses, that is of course a large neighborhood that has several different traffic problems. This addresses kind of the most longstanding concern, which is speeding on Riverwood and cut-through traffic on Riverwood, Heatherford, and Meadow Lake. This puts a speed cushion installation on each of those three streets, as well as doing a little additional stop bar painting at the intersections of those, which is the stop sign at Heatherford and Riverwood, and the stop sign at Meadow Lake and Riverwood.
Question for you, John.
If approved, do you know the timeframe?
These would be installed and the lines would be painted?
We'd be shooting for December on this one. I'd like to get it done by the end of the calendar year. All we've got to do is, is we've, we've, you know, we've been installing a group in Oak Grove recently. We've, we've, we've learned a lot in the last few weeks about how these things go, so we think we're refining our process and our procedure. We've, we've got the tools we need, we've been gotten a little bit cleaner with it. I hope we'll clear them out in November and get on to this in December.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Guarantee a motion, please.
Like to make a motion, Resolution 2025-049.
I'll second it.
Mr. Long makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Stacy?
Yes.
You have our next item.
Next is Resolution 2025-042. This is a resolution to approve an amendment to the 2023 interlocal agreement between the town of Lewisville and the Winston-Salem-Fersyth County Utilities Commission. I want to clarify for counsel, the purpose of this amendment is to update the adopted 2023 agreement to include accurate costs associated with the project. So the agreement is not actually what is before you tonight, so when you vote on this resolution, you're voting on the amendment to the agreement. I know there's, there's much discussion to still be had, but wanted to make sure that you're clear on exactly what it is that you're voting on when you vote on this resolution. So again, that is, is the amendment correcting the dollar figures in this agreement. With that being stated, the additional information that was requested at the October briefing, and then also from the November briefing at those meetings, that this has been discussed. Mayor, if appropriate, I would turn it over to Mr. Al Andrews, our town attorney and, and counsel for further discussion.
Great, thank you.
Al, you still awake?
Yes, sir. So, this is, this item that you're voting on now is for a change in cost for the lift station that's being planned along, near Great Wagon Road. This is, is due to the reasons that town manager just shared with you. There were some discussions that were had about concerns about folks who are going to make use of this, of the capacity that's being offered by this lift station, and how we're going to deal, and there was a great deal of intellectual conversation about that. Ultimately, I had some conversations with the utility with which we're contracting. They have an act, they are a rate-setting organization, they're not an annexation organization, they're a rate-setting organization, meaning that they set the rates for water and sewer services in Winston-Salem, and in Forsyth County, and in the incorporated towns that contract with them, including us. And we have a rate that is set, it's 1.5 times the, basically, city Winston-Salem rate, and there's a percentage of that that goes to the, to the capital reserve. That group was certainly looking forward to this project. They are not able to sort of compel or provide annexation, they're not an annexing authority. That is something that an incorporated town in North Carolina can do. And we certainly have the ability to have voluntary annexation into Lewisville to provide growth, and that is up to the property owner that comes in, and by coming in, they would gain, gain a whole host of benefits. But under the charging that is there, they would be charged the rate that is charged for Lewisville residents, they wouldn't have a lesser rate, they would have the same rate that's available, with the percentage going into the capital reserve account.
Let me, I want to be sure I understand what you just said. If, if a, I don't want to talk about the size of the acreage yet, but if somebody in the, in the unincorporated area decided that they wanted to hook on to the lift station, they would be charged the prevailing rate in Lewisville, which is 1.5%, but four tenths would go into this water and sewer fund to help, over a period of time, help us retire, help us recover the investment that we made in the lift station.
Yes, sir, they would be contributing, as would Lewisville residents.
Okay, great, so that's, so we don't make any distinction about who can contribute and can't.
Right, yes, sir.
Carry on.
So, I certainly want to be responsive, any questions that might come up, you know, having said that, but there were conversations, pretty deep and robust conversations with leadership at the utilities, what used to be known as City County Utilities Commission, about their willingness and what they could and could not do. They were certainly wanting to, wanting to assist us in certain ways, but they are not in a position to sort of compel what's called voluntary annexation, which is the annexation method used pretty much in North Carolina now. But they are certainly going to provide that rate structure that we talked about. Moving forward with this, from all that was learned, the capacity that's being provided by the new lift station takes care of Lewisville, and it takes care of an area, and I think the number of properties now are around seven or so additional properties that would be able to tie in, if they so choose, to the, to get the capacity that's there.
I'm going to pause, because I want, we're kind of dumping a lot on my brain. The reason that that capacity exists, or that, that limitation exists, is because of the basin drainage?
Yes, sir. They're better equipped people, but as I've learned over time, a lift station has a gravity feature, so there's a, there's a basin that drains, that the lift station would provide capacity or primary service for. And in this case, I believe it's the nature of 400 acres, 300 of which are currently in this town limits, and 100 that are outside the town limits, equaling that property, those numbers of properties that we spoke of. If there needed to be greater capacity, that would require construction of some sort, whether it be an increase in the capacity, or probably a relocation, because again, you have to do these things on basins, and the basins have been created, so they would probably have the additional properties going to a different basin.
So the, I'm sorry, can we get a question? So the location of this lift station was determined by the engineers with CCUC as the optimal location to be able to drain as much of this basin as we possibly can. I'm trying to repeat this back to you, so I understand it.
Yes, sir.
At this particular point, there are roughly 400 acres that will be served by this lift station. 300 of those are currently in the town of Lewisville.
Yes, sir.
There is an additional 100 that is outside the town of Lewisville, but my understanding is that part of that will be, part of that is going to, there will be requests for part of that, for a voluntary annexation into Lewisville, simply because it's contiguous to attract that need that the developer wants to develop. So the net, net, net on all this is basically the excess capacity that this lift station can serve is about 40 acres. Okay? Without additional investment over the baseline to pump up or do whatever. Okay. Okay, I want, now, in this particular situation, the engineers designed this so it could handle, there are several pieces of undeveloped property that are within the town of Lewisville, that those were taken into consideration for the density that could be allowed based upon our current zoning and our UDO. Capacity was determined, if I, if I'm getting off track, please tell me. The capacity of this station was determined on the type of development that could occur there, plus the demand that existing development could have, and that's why they came up with the capacity that they have. Okay? And that, that also includes potential development that could occur along the Great Wagon Road. And this will, this particular lift station will serve the entire Great Wagon Road, in addition, out Shaliford Road, to serve the residents of Lewisville for their usage should they wish to install sewer in the future. Okay? How did I do, Al? Sorry.
You spoke, it looks like a long-serving mayor.
I've been living this thing, I'm sorry.
He's preparing for the, a position on the City County Utilities Board.
No, thank you, no, thank you. I want to say again, I want to be sure I understand this, in our 2014 agreement, there is language in there that CCUC says that they will suggest for, encourage development outside of our municipal boundaries to ask for voluntary annexation in Lewisville. We're talking about 40 acres at this particular point. Based on that, with the law, the annexation laws that legislature passed in 2011, voluntary annexation can only happen with 100% of the property owners that would be affected by that voluntary annexation agreeing to do that.
Yes, so the old way of annexation pre-this was you could essentially annex areas that you didn't own. Now you can only annex areas that you own if you're a municipality, and of course, property owners adjacent to you can request voluntary annexation, for all the reasons that that's a great thing to do. And of course, that brings growth, so yes, you are correct that we don't have compelled, you know, sort of annexation, we have voluntary annexation. We can help facilitate that through any number of ways, but usually there's a petition that comes in, and I'll, Madam, Madam Manager, was there something that...
I was going to, I think what you're speaking to, Mayor, is if it's a contiguous annexation, meaning adjacent, then anybody can come in and ask for voluntary annexation at any time. If it's satellite and part of a larger development, then, then that's when you usually have all of the 100% that needs to...
Thank you for clarification on that. Okay, I got it, great. If I also understood you correctly, there are municipalities that can require annexation to access facilities.
That's correct.
But that only occurs because those municipalities own, operate, and maintain those facilities. In our case, we don't own, operate, or maintain any facility. Okay? So therefore, we do not have the ability to forcibly annex somebody to access the lift station.
Yes, sir. When you own a utility as a municipality, you have two options. You can charge a differential rate, or you can bring the person, bring the property within the town through annexation. And it's, it's essentially compelled voluntary annexation as a, and then that entity that is annexed, or that property pays the prevailing rate within the town, which would be less, so that's their benefit to come in. But when you own a utility, you have that ability. We don't own the utility, we are contracted with a larger utility that's an authority, so it's, it's regulated by statute, but that authority cannot annex. So that's the one little rub in our case. Since they can't annex, they just are a rate-setting organization. So what you said was correct.
Boy, I'm rolling now. If you, if, if the, if I recall, there was a case in Kernersville a number of years ago, where the town of Kernersville was charging a different rate differential to hook on their facilities outs, over and above what the, what the residents of Lewisville, Kerners were paying. That was challenged, and the town of Kernersville was compelled, forced, to provide a $6 million settlement, because the court upheld that you cannot have rate differentials. Am I saying all that right?
Yes, sir. Essentially, they, this, they, it was forbidden, what the method that they were using for rate differentials, and what they were doing in that town, and of course, we don't want to have that kind of exposure, that was pretty significant.
So basically, CCUC sets the rate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we don't, we don't have anything to do with the rate.
No.
But the good, I guess the good thing in this part of it, even though they're not, the, this 40 acres is not going to be located in the town of Lewisville, they still are going to pay the prevailing Lewisville rate, but four tenths of that is going to go into our water sewer fund to help us recoup the cost of the lift station.
Yes, sir.
Is there a, is there a termination of when we can have that rate in effect, or that, that provision in effect?
So it's when, it's when, when it goes live, when they, when they tap into the new line or lift station, I should say, then their rate, their, their initial rate is going to be the rate for Lewisville.
Okay, and there's no, there's no endpoint, when, I mean, we don't recoup a certain amount of money, and then we no longer get that contribution to our water sewer fund, this is perpetuity?
It's for as long as the agreement exists, yes, sir.
Okay. I think I've worn everybody out, is there...
Now, could you repeat all that just one more time? I want to take notes.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. So, you know, there's been a lot of banter around this issue lately. So the question I have for you, Madam Manager, is you, you made reference to an agreement that already exists?
Yes, sir.
And is that a binding agreement?
I would believe so.
So it's legally...
Yeah. It is a binding agreement.
Okay. So, so now, the four corners of that, I don't know what they are. So in that agreement, does it say that we will pay for a lift station when built, or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it isn't, it's really a how much question, it's not a if question. Is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay.
What year was that?
2023.
I just had one question. Because I wasn't part of the 2023 discussions. I know that one time this was a couple million dollar project, and I, I looked at the numbers on the paper, it's considerably more now. Am I correct in saying that the size of this was not changed from the beginning, that the, the cost went up because of what? Was it just because of increased materials, or what?
I can speak to that one.
You're correct, Tom. The size, even since the engineers first were looking at designing this thing pre-2023, it was probably about 2018, 2019, when these discussions were first started about this lift station to serve the Great Wagon Road. That size has not changed. What has changed is that original $2 million that you, a figure that you see in the originally 2020 agreement, that was based off of engineers' estimates of the previous years. Since we've seen so much inflation, I think a good example is our roundabout project. You know, eight years ago, that was going to be $1.2 million, now it's a $5 million project, just based solely on inflation. But no, sir, the size and capacity of the lift station, nor the location, nothing has changed since that agreement was had.
And I will say too, I appreciate, Al, the research that you did on this, especially it was of note, the, the ability for us to recoup money through the water rate. Number two, I did a little homework, you know, one time, we commissioned a study, an engineered study. We were entertaining searing the entire town. I, I actually found my map of that whole thing. And I had forgotten that there are, one of the issues west of us is there are a number of basins. I did ask a question at that time, many years ago, why don't we just build a superstation? And it was explained to me that each basin has to be dealt with individually, because you're only pumping one way. You're not pumping two. So you can't pump, you know, that, that arrangement wouldn't work. Each basin has to be dealt with separately. So that involved, I think, five or six lift stations in various places out west of us. So the other thing that, in looking at that too, when we did that, La Sera didn't exist. So the basin we're talking about here would have been, La Sera would have been part of, would have been serviceable by this, this station, but due to the fact that it has its own service at this point, that acreage and the subsequent additions to it are out of that equation. So, you know, I think we're probably in a pretty good spot that, that this capacity, and I'm assuming the capacity was determined by the engineers at CCUC?
Friesen Nichols is the engineering firm that determines the capacity. They were, got the qualifications package from CCUC in order to move forward with that.
And then when we had talked before on this too, so this pretty much assures because of what, the capability of what this lift station geographically could service, that our, our reserves for Great Wagon Road, and our reserves for possibly what we call the Gateway Project, it was something that had been discussed over the years behind the food line and over there, that that would be there for us.
Correct, yes, that area is included.
Since this basin is pretty much maxed out with what, I guess, I guess regardless of what the capacity is, they're not going to pump outside the basin for it. It would require the next basin over. So I think, I think that that's, that's good. I was concerned about, you know, primarily that we could recoup some money, that we could ensure that the projects that we want to do, that it's, that it's there, and if it was possible for this to go across basins, that, that someone else would pay for that, not us. And so, based on all that, and I want to thank Mayor in particular, and Al, and, you know, to, to set up the meetings that we had, and to get in touch with the people that are the decision-makers at CCUC, you know, I know I deferred this thing out this far, it came up originally some time back, but it was good to go through that process and be sure exactly what we were looking at, and that I felt we were in a good place with it. So I think at this point, we've kind of crossed the t's that I was looking at for...
Yeah, Tom, and I'll say...
Yeah, I have another question that, you know, I think a lot of people might be wondering about it, and of course, you know, I've wondered about it at some point in the past. These lift stations are like most mechanical devices, I suspect, and that is that they have some end of life? Is that, is that accurate? I mean, if it's a mechanical device, I mean, you know...
Absolutely, absolutely. They have to be upgraded...
Right.
...or replaced.
Right.
They do, it depends on their usage, you know, you hope you get 20 years out of them, 25.
Yeah, and I heard somebody earlier tonight, who I think was left now, say that a Utilities Committee had made a recommendation that it be located at some other place. So I have a question, was that looked at by, by City County Utilities and determined that this was the better place for it, or what, what happened with that?
Yes, sir. Originally, Friesen Nichols, the engineering firm that designed, or was looking at the different basins and the different options to approach the town, there was three different options that were given. The first option was just to upgrade at about the cost of $250,000 at that time, I don't know what that would cost now, but to upgrade the existing station that serves pretty much the food line shopping center. Town decided not to go with that option, because it, as, as Tom mentioned, it would not have served the entire Great Wagon Road or all of the Gateway area. Second option was to have a pump station that was located more north of town, or is still in town limits, but, but more north of the where the existing one is, is proposed to go now. But that one, and, and two, it was going to serve less acreage, most of which was already developed with single-family homes. It was not going to serve the entire Great Wagon Road as, as requested by the town, and it was going to cost more, it had a higher price tag. So then option three is the one that we landed on, that, that is where the 2023 agreement came from. In order for us to serve the entire Great Wagon Road, the Gateway area that Tom mentioned, at a lower cost is, is the reason that the town went with that option to begin, or at that time.
Counselors, any additional questions?
No, other than to say too, that with the Utilities Committee, I understand Lynn's, you know, is questioning about that, but I will also say, as someone who's been on boards and committees, including that one, they're all advisory groups, and ultimately, you know, that the advice that's given is, is given great weight typically with this board, always has been, but sometimes that doesn't necessarily guarantee that you're always going to agree with boards and committees, as Mr. Thompson will tell you. Back in his time, we had some issues that were bantered back and forth that way, as we do even today. So I just felt that was worth mentioning, because...
I'd like to, to say, thank you, Mayor, and Al, our attorney, and, and our town manager, for the clarity, because ideas get out there, and unnecessarily, they can be very negative without being informed correctly. And so when it can be spoken to in like a public session like this, and explained, you know, step by step where the history is, and not just, you know, randomly, oh, we can do better than that, without really studying an issue, it's, it's a great service to the community, so appreciate the succinct and clarity of how it was explained.
Thank you.
At some point too, it'd be nice maybe to, we've had a good relationship with CCUC to date, there's no question. It would be good, I'd be curious to see, have a long-range conversation with them. I don't know what they're, I'm sure they must have discussions about where they're looking to go in the future, and what they think they would be doing, and so forth, and to whatever degree we could segue into that, I think, and be part of those discussions might be advantageous going forward.
I agree. I believe, I believe this piece of information is correct. In my discussions with the Chairman of the Utilities Commission Board, when I mentioned the possibility that we might consider postponing this project, or changing the project, the response was, your, your bid would no longer be valid.
Correct.
And it would have to go back out for rebids. The potential for a much higher rebid is there, but more than that, you may not get any bidders, because a valid bid was received and you rejected it, or you didn't reject it, you just didn't act on it, but that, in the, in the future, that particular bidder, who was a low bidder, may say, I don't have time for this, either of the projects to be wanted. Second thing that I think was important that came out of my conversation with him, he said, you guys are on the hook for $800,000 in the engineering and the development and the spec-ing and the design of this, that doesn't change.
Correct.
You decide not to do it, you're still on the hook for $800,000.
Yes, sir.
So I think that there, and, and Al, you're, you're the, you're the legal guy here, but we have about two years ago approved the development of 48 townhomes that are at the intersection of Great Wagon Road and Lewisville, Shaliford Road. They submitted that predicated on sewer would be provided. We've been slow to develop the Great Wagon Road for a lot of reasons, mainly because of funding from, it was in North Carolina Department of Transportation's prerogative to build the road when they were going to build the road, but if we decided at this point that we weren't going to do it, or delay it... But if we decided at this point that we weren't going to do it or delay it, then there is an opportunity cost that they have lost. And potentially, they could say, guys, this project is no longer feasible because of the time that's passed, the opportunity that was lost. Oh, no, by the way, we're going to sue you.
You absolutely would be sued. You absolutely would lose or settle. And that would be unrecoupable funds, but payable on demand. So that's a tangible, and you're dealing with a capable plaintiff, meaning that plaintiff would have the ability to bring that suit with competent attorneys and to prosecute that matter. So it was rightfully a point of consideration, because even if you don't have a written agreement to the level to articulate, to explain the articulation you just gave, in business, there's justifiable reliance on representations made, and the courts will recognize that there was a manifestation or representation, probably supported by witness testimony, emails, the whole thing, that you said, what you just articulated, that was said. It probably was said in this room. So, yeah, that, that case would be, I hate to say prima facie, but that case would speak for itself.
Ladies and gentlemen, those of you who are watching at home, assuming any of you are still up, you've heard me through the course of this meeting be very sensitive to the fact of potential lawsuits against the town, potential large settlements that we'd have to pay because of actions that we took at the board. It's not, it doesn't, that doesn't mean that we aren't sensitive to and cognizant of and listening to concerns expressed by our residents, but we also have to recognize that we paid out $1.9 million for a very similar kind of situation where we did not approve a development, and the developer of that decided that they would go ahead and prosecute, and we had to settle. So if it sounds like I'm being very cautious, yes, I am, because that, as our attorney pointed out earlier, first and foremost, our job is to protect the residents of Louisville and to expose, to unnecessarily expose our residents in our town and our council and our council members to lawsuits is something that we should not be doing. One final note. Tom, thank you very much, because you were incredibly probing and incredibly persistent and incredibly deliberative in your discussions in this, and you prompted, you prompted a, another layer of exploration that we hadn't made up until you really started saying, we need to look at this. So thank you for being persistent like you are. Councilmembers, any other comments? Any other questions? What's your pleasure, please?
Move to approve Resolution 2025-042.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Excuse me. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Last item on the agenda, folks, and thank you for sticking with us. All of us are aware of the difficulty that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County school system is in, because they, they have actually, they spent money that they didn't have, and they are, they find themselves in a position of having to pay back a lot of money. In order to accomplish that, they've entered into a program of austerity. That austerity means they're laying off teachers, they're eliminating positions. Not just saying they shouldn't do that, but it's a fact of life. While all of us, all of us feel that there is some concern and certainly a lack of awareness by the school board that they got themselves into this position, first and foremost, our consideration should be the students. They didn't ask for this. They didn't ask for austerity. They didn't ask for, to be put in a position where classroom learning could be impacted. Over the course of the last six weeks, a number of organizations, including the county commissioners and the Winston-Salem Chamber of Commerce and a number of other groups, have come forward with that, that exact sentiment. Let's not look back on what happened, let's figure out how it happened, and so it doesn't happen again, but let's look forward on how we move our public school system forward. Mark Owens, who I admire greatly, who is the president of the Winston, Winston Chamber of Commerce, that's now Winston-Salem, said, businesses are looking at our community, and they are looking at how we meet this challenge. And if we don't meet the challenge in a positive way, that's going to impact us for years to come. So what I'm proposing, counsel, is that as a municipality, we step up a bit, and we support our school systems, not in a direct contribution to the school board, but in a contribution to a fund, separate fund that's been set up by the Winston-Salem Foundation, that they administer to provide supplies to our classrooms. This goes directly to the Winston-Salem Foundation. The Winston-Salem Foundation determines the need and then distributes the money. Okay? So what I'd like to propose is that we make a contribution of $500,000. No. $5,000. I'm thinking lift station right now. Of $5,000 to the Winston-Salem Foundation earmarked for the Classroom Supply Fund.
Just some clarity, Mayor. This is to help the students, correct?
Correct. This goes directly into the classroom for supplies.
And this has been earmarked by them to help the students, correct?
This would be paid by the general fund.
This would come out of the general fund, as all of our expenditures come out of the general fund. The $8 million general fund that we have.
It's 10:42. Excuse the fact that I didn't remember that.
That's a motion I would like to make, and so I make the appropriate motion that we contribute $5,000 to the Winston-Salem Foundation Fund for Classroom Supplies.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, councilmembers, because now you've given me the latitude that I can reach out to the other municipalities in Forsyth County and say, let's follow the example of Louisville by stepping up to help our public schools, and we'll see how that one plays out.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you actually vote on a budget amendment as well?
Oh, okay. The language, Pam?
The expense line would obviously come out of governing body for $5,000, and then you would need a site of revenue source, and that would obviously be fund balance appropriated.
Okay, so if I'm, I'll amend my motion that the, the $5,000 contribution come out of the government?
Governing body.
Governing body.
Department.
Department, and that we, that this is a budget amendment to accomplish that.
To be paid out of fund balance.
To be paid out of fund balance. Okay. She followed that winding road.
Yeah.
That's how we got there. That would be my revised motion. Ms. Welch, would you accept your revision to your second? All righty, we have a revised motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Pam, for that clarification. All righty, councilmembers, could there possibly be anything else? We can discuss tonight.
Administrative reports.
Oh, my God. Just another whole half page.
Ten more minutes. We can watch the news.
Yes, there is.
What time is the pizza coming?
Right. That's how it is right now. Stacy, you have the first segment of our administrative reports.
Yes, just a few things coming up in November and early December. The annual fitness walk challenge began on November 1st. It will run through November 30th. Folks can check out our website for details on that. Town facilities will be closed Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th for the Thanksgiving holiday. The next blood drive will take place December 3rd from 1:00 until 5:30 p.m. at Mary Alice Warren Community Center. Also, at the community center, our annual holiday open house will be held Friday, December 5th, beginning at 4:30 p.m. After the open house, then you can then head to Shalaford Square for the tree lighting on that same evening. That will begin at 7:00 p.m., again on December 5th. And I would like to mention this was not included because it comes after the next council meeting, but only the day after. So on December 12th, that is going to be a holiday movie night at Mary Alice Warren Community Center, featuring Home Alone. Again, December 12th, they do have limited seats available, so you can register online for that.
And bring your blankets.
Bring your blankets.
Angie, clerk's report, please. Action, let me back. Have any questions for the mayor? All right, Angie?
Yes, council, I just wanted to provide a quick update. In October of 2024, council passed a resolution by a vote of seven to zero for the intent to implement staggered terms for council. The proposed change would have had the mayor remaining at a two-year term, and other council members would be on a staggered four-year term. This item was on the November 4th election ballot as a referendum for a charter amendment for the town of Louisville. The referendum did fail with over a 57% no vote.
Very good. Thank you for the update. Stacy, actions that we approved at our briefing session?
Yes. Approved at the briefing last week was Resolution 2025-051. This was approved to relinquish capacity in the Harper Road Sewer Lift Station back to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities for a refund of $600,000 to the town's Water and Sewer Capital Reserve account. And then also, Ordinance 2025-030 was approved, amending Chapter 27 of the town code to include Section 27-3, which entails the street restrictions.
Very good. Any questions? All righty. Is there anything under, there's nothing else under that. Very good. For the good of the order, and this, I guess this is when I say, is there possibly anything else that we could discuss?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
We got public comments, bro.
Yes. Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, some more public comments.
Well, actually, yeah, we're, we're about, it is, it is 10 minutes till 11 o'clock, so I appreciate your indulgence in my inability to conduct a meeting. This is the second opportunity for individuals who wish to come up and address general comments of the council. Our chance to listen to you, please state your name and your address.
Fred Franklin, 1420 Conrad Sawmill Road. I want to thank the council. I knew it. I know it's taken you a long time, and you had a lot of questions about this lift station. But what you have just done with the vote, you have provided the Louisville, in the future, with an opportunity to realize, commercial development down in this area, that who knows might be 50 to 100 million dollars worth. And that will then help sustain the town as we go future, or forward in the future. So thank you very much for finally getting around to passing that one.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
To repeat that for the audience, Ms. Frye said to us, happy Thanksgiving, and the same to you guys too. Any other comments this evening? With that, I'll repeat my statement. Is there anything possibly that we could want to discuss tonight? Ms. Welch?
Yes, a couple of quick questions. The last council member's meeting is December the 4th, so that's not, we're not having a briefing.
No, that is not, there's not going to be a briefing. Generally, when you have a new elected council, the first meeting that takes place is their organizational meeting in which they administered their oaths, and that will happen on December the 11th.
And so there will be no business on December the 11th?
There will be a public hearing for the Louisville Clemens Annexation Agreement. Other than that, unless something pops up, we usually do not have much business on that agenda.
Okay. And the Christmas parade is Sunday?
December the 14th.
All right, and will there be a council kind of where we had the, our deputies as well? We used to have a Christmas luncheon. Are we having anything like that?
Yes, I believe that's been emailed to you, but we can send it to you once more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers? Once again, ladies and gentlemen, my God, I don't think we've ever had a five-hour council meeting, this many people stuck it with us. So thank you very much. For your interest in the town, we really appreciate you being here, councilmembers. Thank you so much for your thoughtful discussion and for your continued attention, even to my blunderings, I go through council meeting on occasion, and thank you for the reminders the mayor put down to keep me on track.
That was my honor.
With that, if there's no other business to come forward to council this evening, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion. Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We're adjourned.